Leong, John and Darcy, are you here? It should be item 22 except I'm going to ask if we can hear item 23. It's very short and we have someone from the county here waiting. So can I get approval to move item 23 here now?
If we need to do this formally, I say move.
Okay, second.
Second.
We don't have to vote with the lights. Okay, go, vote with the lights. Okay.
Motion carries with Willie absent.
Okay. So item 23 is the brush abatement program. Can we have the staff report?
Mr. Mayor, Gray Schmidt, City Clerk. This is your annual brush abatement program. Your municipal code requires property owners in the locally adopted wild land urban interface fire area to maintain an effective defensible space around their property. And this is for fire hazards mostly in the hillsides. There were three properties on your list. One has abated by the deadline. There are two properties left. This is to hear any objections to being on that list. I do not have any speaker cards. You would adopt a resolution basically allowing the county to abate that and recover costs in the August assessment hearing. And I do have Deputy Chief Lenny in the audience in case council has any questions for her.
Okay. I do not have any questions. Darcy, Leong, Rod?
No.
Okay, so we can have a motion.
I move that we conduct the brush abatement program hearing to note objections while we've done that. Okay, we've noted the objections. I move that we adopt resolution number 19-075 ordering abatement of public nuisance and potential fire hazard pursuant to CMC Section 16 dot 40 dot 320 regarding defensible space and resolution number 19-057.
Okay, second. I'll second, vote with your lights.
We had nobody here from the public, correct?
No, no cards.
And the motion carries with Willie absent.
Okay, so now we can go backwards to 22.
Mr. Mayor, before we start on this item, given my continuing conference with Apple, I will be recusing on this item and will rejoin you when it's, once it's complete. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so this is the donation for the funding of select projects identified in the 2016 bicycle transportation plan, 2018 pedestrian plan, school walk audits, and Mary Avenue Protected Bike Way. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening again, Roger Lee, Assistant Director of Public Works. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So yes, this is for the Apple donation agreement. What I'll cover in this presentation is sort of a summary of how we got to where we are today. I'll give a map that shows where these specific projects are located at. I'll go over the funding status of each of these different projects. I'll also include how they ranked in our respective bike plan and pad plan. And then I'll also describe how the monies flow into the city, how we anticipate them, what the schedule is. Then I'll wrap up with our other considerations that are within the funding agreement and then our recommendations. And, you know, so with that, it is an exciting opportunity for Public Works to receive these dollars and to, you know, complete these improvements within the timeframe that we see that it's possible. And it is my hope that this is a continuing conversation with Apple and that these conversations will continue to occur while these projects are being built and there'll be more subsequent phases as this continues. So as a summary of how we got to where we are today, if you recall, Apple had donated previously $128 million on Stevens Creek Boulevard from Tantow to Wolf in November of 2017. In about this time last year, there have been different study sessions and council conversations on a head tax. We also received shortly after that a letter from Apple where they expressed a desire to partnership with the city to work on both short and long-term transportation solutions. And so, you know, these are, I would characterize these projects, they are short-term transportation solutions. It doesn't mean that they're not very effective at doing the, improving our bike and pad network. But when I talk about subsequent phases, it is also on these long-term solutions that we would work with them on. So, you know, since October of last year, we have been meeting regularly with Apple after receiving that letter of partnership. And in our conversations with Apple, these bi-weekly meetings, we've been going over our 2018 bike plan and our 2016 pad plan and also our school walk audit items. And one of the things that I had learned in going through the process with Apple is sort of the criteria that I came to believe and that occurred internally was that they were looking at ways the city could ultimately leverage funding for projects. They were looking for projects where perhaps the city would not be competitive in receiving outside grants such as verbs or Measure B. And, you know, having funds go towards those types of projects that would then free up other dollars that would allow us to be competitive on other projects. I think that was all part of the consideration that Apple put in into this. We presented these projects this evening. We presented those to you back in council, to council back in April 2nd of this year. So the projects that are listed here, you know, while we have the five specific projects, some of them are spread out. The yellow is what pops out first. So that's the school walk audit items. I believe there's 12 schools, 77 different locations where these activities would occur. You know, I can just quickly go through, like this would be the McClellan sidewalks would be over here. This would be, just working our way over, this would be the Bub Road improvement that we'll talk about. Una Perisera basic design would be here and McClellan separated bike way projects here. But just to give an idea of where these projects are within our city and how they're distributed. So getting into the specific project funding, this is for the protected bikeways on McClellan burned to Tory. And red there just denotes how it is prioritized in our 2016 bike plan. We estimate that the dollar need to complete all improvements, that would also include the intersection is an $8.83 million need to complete everything. We have currently allocated $5.29 million to complete those improvements. So Apple, through this funding agreement, is proposing a $1 million donation from Burned Imperial and $1 million from Selling to Tory and $160,000 for signal improvements at the intersection of De Anza and McClellan. This project is eligible for a verbs grant of $1 million. And so if you just back out all the numbers there, to complete that project completely from Burned to Tory, that's the full limits including the intersection, we anticipate about $380,000 will be needed to finish that project. In the schedule I'll show you later, you know, this project won't be complete until the end of fiscal year 2021 to include the signal improvements themselves. This is the McClellan Road sidewalks. A lot of this work has already been done. It's identified the 20 pad plan with 80 points. I believe that was the highest number of points that were available for that project. You can see our allocation and how Apple is matching that donation. Because that project is substantially complete, you know, our estimated costs are pretty solid and we see that around $370,000 would be available to be re-appropriated to other projects within this list. And I'll have a summary of how that looks here in the end. For the school walk audit, this was not ranked within the pad plan. We had allocations of $400,000 for three years is what we'd anticipated.
So we can see the slides. You don't need to read every bullet point.
So here, as I say, so after the funding, we see $450,000 of additional funding would be needed. All right, Bub Bub Road, Tier 3, $1.98 million. Una Perisera, this is just for the basic design and what that means is that would be just the design to do a surface street crossing at De Anza at Una Perisera Creek Trail, $1.8 million. That was a Tier 1 in the pet bike, in the bike plan. Mary Avenue Protected Bike Way, that was a Tier 2. And it showed up there as a, I think it's a Class 2, which is a buffered bike lane. It showed up as a Tier 2. This would actually would be a protected bike way, so it would have the flexible bollards, $165,000. And then just to see how the flow of dollars would occur, in this current fiscal year, you know, it'll likely be a little bit later this summer because the McClellan sidewalk improvement projects are complete, about $2 million would be coming in for that because those projects are complete. And it's probably a good time to talk about how the funding agreement reimburses the city for the cost. For all the projects, with the exception of school walk audits, one-third of the funding would be upfront. The second third would be when the project is awarded for construction and then the final third is when the project is complete. The school walk audit items are one-half upfront, one-half upon completion. And so all that is factored into how these dollars are funding in. And I mentioned, you know, how the $370,000 is the dollars to redistribute. You can see where the additional dollars are for the different projects and how that could be redistributed into other projects to offset the additional dollars that are needed. That's the intent of showing that in that slide.
While you're on that slide though, why two values at the bottom there? It says additional city dollars. I'm kind of seeing that as one phrase, additional city dollars.
Right. The $380,000 is just to complete the McClellan Separated Bike Way project from Burned to Tory. And then the $450,000 is what we anticipate needed just to finish up the school walk audit items. And then the column to the right just shows how those dollars could be used to help balance out those funds by that year. Okay?
I have a question too. So this flow is expected money coming, the time when the money would come in, which is the time we're estimating the construction will start, right? So it's one-third when we start the project, one-third when construction start?
Right.
So we are, what's your estimated construction date?
Yeah, I mean, this is a reasonable representation of how many dollars we would receive that fiscal year, whether a project started, awarded, or was completed. I mean, it's just an average of what I, of what I would predict.
And but then when the project, when the construction starts, the city actually have to fund the entire remaining part because we won't receive funding from Apple until the entire project is finished.
That's true. We would have to encumber all the funds. We'd get a third upfront and as a schedule I mentioned to you.
So we will be seeing like this $5 million, the city probably would need to allocate $2 million this year or something like that. Do you have?
Yeah, I didn't create a slide in terms of how many dollars the city would be fronting each year. This is just, it shows the flow of money coming to us. But I mean, we would be at least initially fronting more money, say, next fiscal year. And then as these projects are completed, 5.5 million would be coming in to reimburse us.
And this bike project tend to have delay and it tends to be more costly than where you estimated beginning. So in case the project is twice as expensive as we had estimated, we will have to cover the extra, say, $2 million and to complete the project before we can receive maybe the $1 million Apple, the one-third they.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we would be talking with Apple. They would, they would know where we are with every project. Of course, we would know the cost when we would award the project, know what that is relative to the donation amount. And then that would be one of the points in why we're talking with them about, say, a potential Phase 2. We would identify that, you know, we'd work to have that being prioritized with the other greater needs. But let's just say none of that worked out. Yes, we would have to be paying for the balance of the dollars to finish the project.
Or can we do this, I mean, in the beginning of the construction, we would already probably know how much extra we would have. Can we go to the Apple at the time and say, look, it used to be $2 million, now would be $3 million. Can you just fund all the remaining two-thirds as the, at the beginning of construction because we will be covering the other $2 million?
I mean, the funding agreement, how it's currently written, is just a third, third, a third. We would, I would definitely inform them of the awarded amount because we'd be seeking the second, two, the second third amount. And we would know then that the project is going to go over what had been set aside for that allocation.
Yeah, so can we have the funding agreement drafted in a way in case the construction cost is higher than estimated? Maybe we won't be seeking one-third in the beginning of construction. Maybe we will be seeking like 50% of the construction cost.
So can you save, can you finish the presentation and save the questions for after the public comment?
Yes. All right. So I discussed the phasing of donation dollars. I think another important consideration of the, of the funding agreement is that Apple may terminate the agreement if the city adopts fees or taxes that apply at different rates depending on revenue or employee count. So how that would work in practice, if the city were to go forward and adopt, say, a head tax, the dollars that we have had received to date, there's no clawback provision if those dollars would go back to Apple. But they could terminate the agreement on any future dollars that we may receive if we were to do that. So I think that's just important to note that is in the, in the funding agreement.
So the rates depending on revenue or employee count, those are the only two limitations?
Yes.
So if there was a head tax that didn't depend on revenue, that depended on profit?
It also provides that if there's a disproportionate impact to Apple.
Okay.
Depending on revenue.
Right, but, right. Right, it does say, or other things with disproportionate.
Okay. So just pointing out those considerations, this is, you know, the last slide, you know, so what we're recommending is authorization execution and you can see those, that's exactly what we have in the staff report. I think one thing to note is in the timeline that we would, we want to get these projects completed, I think it's important to show, you know, very good progress getting, getting this work completed. We are requesting authorization of a two-year limited term staff position to make this happen. If we don't have that staff position, then we're not going to make the schedule that I, that I showed there or the flow of donations as I showed.
So what would the schedule be without the staff position?
It would, it would push it out at least a year or so. And it's clear in the, in the Apple agreement, they are not funding staffing costs, just costs of the projects.
Besides this one, two-year limited term staff position, what extra staff or resource we would need to service all the project?
Well, I think the intent.
Except the ones we already done. I think McClellan.
Why don't I take the public comment first? Jennifer Griffin followed by Alanga Ganga. Welcome back, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. We do love having Apple here. My personal preference, since I don't ride a bike, I would ride a horse, but, okay. I would just dearly love that Apple would donate some money to preserve that our, I'm losing it here, our Orange Orchard Park, what is that called? Stockelmeyer, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of Ring Star House. I would love it if Apple would donate money to preserve the Stockelmeyer House. And I don't think, I mean, it's, they are, Apple is donating a lot of money to the city for this, et cetera, for bike trails. But why not ask them for parks? They've already ponied up $8 million. They do owe us a park because when they purchased the property over there, they bought Lock, Stock and Barrel, a proposed one-acre park that was proposed for the condo complex that was there. And the one-acre park went with the land. So we are supposed to be getting a one-acre park and I believe that that will be Lawrence Midi and that the $8 million, we will prevail at some point. But I'll just throw that out there. They have the Glenn Denning Barn. Why not do some renovation on parkland in Cupertino? Hey, it's just to throw out there. Then again, when we're doing the section from Tantow to Wolf Road, which Apple is donating, we need to be very, very careful that we don't compromise any of the trees there. We don't want to lose any trees. We don't want their root systems affected. That is a highly sensitive area. We, Main Street cut down all the ashes that we'd had for years there. They're all growing back again. We lost a row, the inner, the outer, I think the outer row of ashes were lost when we redid Tantow going into Apple Park. They have, the city put them back again. We have, we don't know what's happening at Valco. And that is going to be a battle royal when we get down to what's actually happening at Wolf. We don't, we have heard that there is some question whether the double row of ash trees along the front of Valco where Sears was, whether they're in or out of Heart of the City. I never heard them taken out. They're in Heart of the City. We don't want to compromise. We will not lose those trees. I'm sorry, we will never take those trees down. So big shout out to Apple. You, thank you for contributions, but please do not compromise the trees. And remember, that area is evolving. It is a lot of fun to live in eastern Cupertino. We can't get anywhere. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get an answer because the part from Wolf to Tantow, the design is already finished, right?
Yeah, we're substantially complete. I mean, we're over 80% complete on that.
So we are now taking out trees, right?
No trees are being taken out.
Yeah.
Okay, Alanga Ganga followed by Lisa Warren.
I'm Alanga Ganga, speaking for myself. Well, I have submitted return comments as well for the record. I don't know whether the council members had a chance to read it, so I'm going to make the statement here. First comment is the staff recommended action item states that Artray is the Director of Public Works in coordination with the grantor to apply excess donation funds from any one completed project to other projects identified in the donation as needed. And as per the conditions specified in Exhibit A of the grant agreement. I would like, I would like to see that, you know, the recommended action be modified. If the city adopts to go with this, the recommended option to be modified to include subject to council approval. I mean, since this involves millions of dollars, even if one of the projects, you know, gets canceled or if it gets, you know, shuck funded or whatnot, right, that's millions of dollars. And I don't want that to be with the authority of the staff members. So I think, you know, ultimate authority of reallocation of funds should rest with the people's representatives. That's you, the City Council, and I would like to modify that. And the second one is, as per the draft grant agreement, funding to the projects is back and loaded. I think Councilmember Vice Mayor Chow made that statement earlier today as well, which means that the one-third of the final payment is due only after the substantial completion of the project. If you read the Exhibit A that says that. This requires that the city to pre-fund over $3 million before, this is out of the total, right? I'm approximately saying that up to, up to $3 million before the grant can reimburse the city. And this should be renegotiated to release the funds, the last final one-third of the funds in stages instead of substantial completion. The other thing I have is, did the city have any say in drafting the grant agreement? I really would like to understand from the staff members whether, did we have any say in this? Did the city get what it wants or is it just, you know, take it or leave it from Apple? So the, another comment I have is when the transportation project funding discussion with Apple came up on April 2nd, I was here, April 2nd, 2019 council meeting, the council members asked the staff to renegotiate the grants to higher priority projects because some of the projects were not higher priority. They were lower priority projects in 2016 bike plan. So did the city attempt to renegotiate those projects and priorities since April 2nd? Please disclose that to the public. We would like to know and what was the outcome of the discussion. The other thing I have is, you know, the termination clause that they had, just now we looked at. And it says that, you know, if there is a head tax imposed sometime in the future, then the termination, you know, they will terminate funding. But look, if, if the head tax were imposed this year or the subsequent years, Apple would have paid a lot more money than that one, right? It doesn't make sense to terminate it upfront because they're committing it. For now, it's a one-time payment. I think that that, that termination clause should be removed as well. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
So can the staff comment and any of the things the resident raised?
Yes, there's a few items. I guess in terms of the phasing, I mean, the second phase is within 60 days of substantial completion. I heard one year, but it's within 60 days of that. In terms of, the other question was.
Oh, about changing the priorities?
Right. I mean, these are, Apple had gone through their own selection processes, you know, we provided all the information that they needed through our bi-weekly meetings. They're, they, in talking with them as far as changing those priorities, it had already gone through their selection process and the list is the list from Apple at this current time.
Question was, after April 2nd council meeting, did we contact Apple again to seek if there is any possibility of funding different options?
Yes, and the list before you is.
So Apple is not willing to consider any other options?
There, no.
Okay. I also have.
Another question he had is, did the city have any say in the negotiation of the grant agreement or is just Apple is dictating everything?
The agreement came to us in a draft form, but it's substantially the way that you see it here. There was, there was a few things that were some back and forth, but it's substantially Apple's agreement. I mean, it's Apple's dollars coming in, it's their agreement. It went through review, went through our attorney's office just to make sure that there wasn't anything in there that was unexpected, but this is an Apple agreement.
So I think I was going to ask, besides the.
Can you save this till after we have the final?
Okay. But I mean, this is not just Apple dollar. We do contribute staff time. This is, should be a partnership.
Okay, Lisa Warren.
So I have to admit that I got a bit confused. I know that earlier you said you're moving item 22 before 17, but, but 22 is similar to part of 17, which is 2B. And it's very confusing and it feels like maybe this shouldn't even be talked about until you do 17. But I'm not the city attorney or any of you up there. I have the same concerns that I'm hearing from Vice Mayor Chow. My question on Saturday, that wasn't read, I have his card number 67 or whatever it was, so I'm wait, I will look for an answer later, but I'm assuming it's not done already, was what happens if you take a donation? You begin the projects and the cost goes up because I would, I would venture to say 90% of the projects the city does in any city, anybody, the cost goes up and often a lot higher. And so if you're midway and it's, and you're going to pay three times what you thought you were going to pay and the donation is only the three, the one-third of what you're doing, you, it's totally irresponsible to accept, in my opinion, to accept the way I understand that this agreement is being described. It would be totally irresponsible to set yourself up to have your money spent to finish their projects, their prioritized projects, which are different than your priorities from what I understand. And, you know, people are going to scream, "Oh, Apple wants to give you money and I want to take it." You know what? $10 million to them is nothing. They're getting what they want. If they really wanted it, they could do it on their own with your permission. And I just think this is really sketchy negotiating. And I recently learned because of Saturday that we really, the money the city has that people like to talk about, we have so much in our budget, most of it's allocated to things that you have no control over. Most of it's allocated to things that you have no control over. That the, what you have control over is just over a little, a little over ten million dollars. Is that correct? So, honestly, you have ten million dollars. You have this grocery list of dream projects all over the place, all different price levels. And you risk literally, even if these projects only cost double what you think they're going to cost as time moves on and construction costs moves on, costs moves on and blah, blah, blah. And the city is forced to use higher billing because they're a government agency, whatever that whole thing is, where you have to use certain insured construction companies. You're always paying more than someone who's not a municipality. And they use that against you. I'd say, thanks, but no thanks.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay, we can bring this back to council now for comments. Leon, do you want to finish?
So, besides the one position of staff two-year, how, what other staff time we expect we'll need to complete the remaining project? Beyond what we've already done?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have one staff person that's been working on the McClellan separated bikeway project already and also on, on the sidewalk project. So, that, that's going to continue. The additional staff person would be to, on the, on the walk audit, locate, you know, on all those locations, a lot of coordinations with the schools. And then, of course, Mary Avenue and Bub. The, that's what that person would be doing. The, the Unapericera Trail is just, is simply just a design. So, that's, there's not too much to manage on that. But we have one person that's already working. We're adding one more.
So, one person, so we will have two staff person working on this project?
Yeah, but what I want to make clear is, we're, they're working on projects that we're already constructing.
So, one is working on, on what we already constructed, but also McClellan, I think at least fifty percent of McClellan Road corridor is not finished. So, that one staff person will continue to finish?
That's, that's right.
Which is our priority.
That's, that's right. And that would, that would be occurring whether this donation came in or not.
Okay. So, I'd like to show this map. It's certainly nice to get free money. And, but then we need to understand what we are really getting and we're accepting that. It's, of course, really nice Apple could give us, but this is the recommended bike path all over the city. So many we want to do. What we have done? The part from Wolf to Tantau, that's the part we finished design, haven't done yet. And this McClellan, McClellan Ranch part is something we are doing this summer. And that's finally getting done. Anything else? Nothing. This is a 2016 plan. We had a bike boulevard that's, design was done here, but then the, it's, the cost was twice more, more than seven segment over the city. Three point four million dollars. So, that's taken off the CIP budget now, for now. And there are bike boulevards like here, not even started. Bike boulevard here, bike boulevard here, not even getting started. So, Apple, this, and then the Stevens Creek is our number one bike path project. We haven't started at that. And Stelling, many college students will use that. We didn't, it's not even on our radar. And that separated bike, bike lane. Deansa separated bike lane, not on our radar. And Blenny also heavily used, not on our radar. So, we have many, many bike paths that needs to be done, not done. And the Apple funding funds, it's good that they are picking up things we are already working on, the McClellan Ranch part. Can you show your map? The map Apple is funding? Need to clear that, yeah. So, this is what Apple is funding. The central part of Cupertino, where we have heavy bike commuting, people who commute to work would need to go through, they are not being covered and we don't have any plan in sight. And we are covering Bub Road on the side, McClellan here. And this is good, important, but then the Mary and, and those. And that's the design. We don't know how much. So, basically, they, we would invest our city staff resource on certain things that's Apple's priority like Lisa said. So, that's something we need to recognize. It's good that there is a billion, a billionaire who wants to pay for my clothes, pay for my car, but he has to dictate what I wear and what I drive. And do I want to do that? That's something I need to think about. But of course, we, I think we have to accept this donation, but we need to understand what it means for the city. And I hope, like I brought up earlier, in, is it possible that we modify the agreement a little bit? For example, in the beginning of the construction, we already sent out for bid. For example, the estimated project cost is three million dollars. So, we get one million dollar in the beginning and then two million dollars for the estimated construction. But maybe it, the cost become four million dollars. It could be labor cost increase. It could be any other reason. It's four million dollars. Is it possible we can structure the agreement to be, they will give us just fifty percent of the remaining cost? So, if, if, if the estimate is four million dollars, we would get two million dollars in the beginning of that construction so that we won't be pre-funding that four million dollars? And then they are only giving us one million in the beginning, one million at the end? Is it possible?
Can I just clarify how this phasing works? So, you would get a third of the not-to-exceed amount that's in the agreement, basically soon after this meeting, with, you know, when the agreement is executed and the projects have been approved. And then, then you would get another third at the commencement of construction. So, there would be two-thirds of the, of the S, of the not-to-exceed amount in this agreement before construction begins. And then, the remaining third would come after construction is substantially complete. And you're correct, the way the agreement is written now, there would be no obligation to provide any funding for construction costs that actually exceeded the amount that are included in this agreement now. So, I just wanted to clarify those points.
Yeah, in terms of being able to go back and renegotiate, I mean, of, of course, that can be done. You know, my, my sense, because I've spent some time with them, is they're, they're looking to, to see us successfully implement these projects on a, on a good, on a good schedule and, and build a relationship and show them that effort. And I, I see, I see opportunities to do those things in, in the next round of, of projects that they may choose to fund. I just, I, I would have my doubts on us being very successful to amend this current agreement.
So, let's say one project costs two million more than expected. Are we still obligated to complete all the projects on that list? And, and fund the cost overruns ourselves?
Well, that's, that's up to council. I mean, you could, I mean, you, you could accept this donation. And, and as, as, as the city attorney said, I mean, you would receive those dollars for all the projects. But now you need to, we need to then complete those projects in a timely manner. If we, if we don't, then, then that, that third that was fronted would need to be going back.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
If we don't complete, the first third will be going back?
Yeah, I believe there's a provision that the, the projects have to be timely completed. I'll, I'll look at that.
Because a lot of times, there could be like community concerns, we have to slow down and listen and then figure out what's the best way?
Because what it says, it says, "Any grant funds not used for the grant project for which they have been funded must be returned promptly to the grantor or maybe applied to other..." Yeah, not used, you know? So, if you, if you just didn't do the, didn't do the project or maybe applied to other grant projects as maybe mutually agreed by the grantor or grantee.
I think the mayor's question is probably, we, we are doing, funding it, do a design, but then didn't have, didn't want to complete it completely?
No, no, not that we didn't want to complete that. We ran out of money.
Ran out of money. Yeah, we don't want to add two million dollars to complete it.
But the grantor could say, "Oh, okay, use, use the money for other projects to finish this one project."
But he's saying they will take back the one-third they gave us?
I, I don't read this as a take-back clause, I'll have to say. I think that's what that clause is intended to do is to say that if the funds were used for something other than the project, you'd have to give them back, not that...
But if, if, if we don't complete for any reason, we just lose the last one-third, right?
That's the way I interpret it.
And another question regarding the head tax. I think the language is that if we adopt a head tax or any tax based on revenue, they will stop this agreement. So, but we don't have to repay them the mon, the funding we received so far?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, but the adoption, it, is it possible? I mean, the reg, regional agency could enforce head tax or revenue gross receipt tax on every city either next year? So, if they impose that, does, often the city will have to adopt that tax they impose on us and they would have everyone vote on those kind of tax? Would, even if we didn't initiate it, would we eventually have to adopt it? And then that would void this agreement? I want to clarify that.
Yeah, I, I would say the intent here is that if the city on its own volition moves forward with its own tax, if we're just complying with state requirements, that is not how I would interpret, interpret the intent of this provision, even if the, if the state required the city to take some action.
I understand the intent, but the language simply says adopted. And some of these regional tax still need voter approval. So, it, when it's approved, it will be approved by all the voters.
I agree with that. If the voters approved, it would be considered a city adoption. Yes.
Yeah, so, so we would adopt it, then that would avoid it. So, can we clarify the intent? If we didn't initiate it, not, not just adopt? Because adopt could be initiated by anyone.
Well, I, I, yes, you have the ability to say you're not going to approve this agreement as it's provided, but you would approve it if Apple amended, agreed to an amendment of some kind. So, that is a determination that, that you have. Whether Apple agrees to that or not, I don't know.
Okay, anybody else? John Darcy?
So, my comments. I can only look at this as a positive gesture by Apple. They don't have to donate money. They can act like any other company and just wait for whatever taxes they have to pay and things. I see this as a positive event. What is the alternative? Not to, not to get this donation? And then these items that are on our bike plan, our 2016 bike plan, which is our map? Then we fund them all? Takes more years out into the future to get to them? The comment that they're not our projects, but they are our projects. They are on the 2016. They chose the ones that they felt, for whatever reason, to be the ones that they liked the best. But again, they are on the list. When I looked through the letter, so page two of their letter, the one that's dated March twenty, March 27th, yep. And it says, "On completion of Phase One projects and start on the next set of partnership opportunities." So, I, I don't think those are hollow words. I do think they, they, they do expect to continue partnering with us. I would be really hoping that Public Works is going to do everything they can to make these things happen as soon as possible and get the next set of contributions to better our community. It's their home too. When I did talk with Apple, I made the suggestion that while these are heavily bike-orientated projects, all of them, I said, "I, I see our community as much more diverse and much more vehicle-focused, that I'd really like to see a significant help with addressing our traffic issues." And what I heard was, "That sounds fine. Have city staff make those prospective street improvements, road segment improvements, intersection improvements, you know, in the next list of potential projects that they can, can look at." It, it leaves me thinking that we didn't do that the first time. And so, they, they looked at what we had. It's not, it's not for them to decide what our city infrastructure, how to design it. It's, they're looking at the things that have already been identified by our staff as needing to be improved in our community. And they're picking the ones they see benefits to and choosing to fund those. If our city staff will also look at, Deansa Boulevard is a huge traffic problem. What improvements can we do for Deansa Boulevard? Stevens Creek is a huge traffic problem. What improvements can be done on Stevens Creek? Homestead is a big problem. What can be done there? By identifying these road segments that are very contentious for all of our residents and deciding that we need to make little offsets for the city buses so that they don't clog a full lane of traffic when they're letting passengers get on and get off? Whether we need a turn lane because people that are crossing the street with bikes or walking are, again, stopping a significant lane of traffic while we're waiting for those? Those types of improvements, the signal improvements, all these things that could help Deansa Boulevard, Stevens Creek Boulevard, Homestead, some of the other streets to move easier, identify those. If we're not identifying them, we can't expect Apple to be looking at those in the next set of partnership ones. And so, I would say, we really need to, to look at those and make sure that they're available. And then we can point to Apple or we can tell Apple, "Hey, look at these other ones too. And what ones would you be willing to fund?" And get their help on those. It's, it's our issue if we're not doing that because they're looking to the projects that we've identified and then they're taking the ones they feel meet whatever criteria is. So, so again, I, I want to keep going back to, I see this as very positive. I think Apple is a good company to have in our community. I'm sure glad they're here and they're not in Mountain View. I'll take, you know, Apple before one of these other companies with the way they're treating our community. And I do think we need to be very appreciative. our community. And I do think we need to be very appreciative to them for what they, they are doing. Um, so, if at some point in time, some tax made sense because other communities were doing it and stuff, we'll deal with that at that particular time. I would sure hope that Apple is a much better partner, and we wouldn't need to do those, resort to those types of things. Take advantage of the fact that they, they are a good partner, and they're doing things that, to my knowledge, no other companies are doing in the Bay Area. So, so I think we should, should move on this and get these things going as quick as possible. Good accountability in terms of, you know, getting these things done on costs. When we were talking about the library expansion, we had the one resident say, he thinks these costs that the city is coming up with for the library expansion are more than they really need to be, and he's working, essentially, I believe, with Public Works to help better control costs and get better costs going. I feel the same thing is gonna happen with these, that perhaps we are, uh, budgeting on the high side, and these things hopefully can be brought in under. When I did talk with Apple, and I asked them, "What if we come in under?" And they said, "The money is yours to channel to other projects. If it's under budget, we're not taking it back. We're not canceling at that point. We've budgeted it, it's yours. Get the projects done." So, let's make it happen as quick as possible. We get to move on to other projects as, uh, efficiently as possible, and use the extra funds for additional bike projects or other projects. Um, yeah, let's go.
Okay, Darcy?
I, I have nothing to add. I would just add one more item to the motion eventually, but until we're ready to do that, I won't, uh, take more time on it.
Okay, so, well, no, it's not your turn.
Do you?
So I think we should move forward with this. I would disagree that other companies are not doing things in the Bay Area, uh, maybe not for bike trails, but for housing. Um, Google just committed a billion dollars, seven hundred fifty million in land, two hundred fifty million in funding for housing. Microsoft, Kaiser, Morgan Stanley, Genentech, five hundred million total. So, ten million is great, but, you know, in the future, I think these companies are gonna have to step up, um, and solve some of the problems directly attributed, um, to their success, the housing situation especially. But, you know, they're not obligated to do anything, so ten million is ten million. We should take it and, and go for it.
But then, they are not obligated, but then they wouldn't be talking to us if it were not for Barry Chen, I have to say. Because, um, they threatened to do a head tax, that's why Apple, for years, they didn't want to do anything for Cupertino. They finally, um, were able to come to a ta, um, an agreement. So, I hope that we, this is a good start, that they will, um, be, uh, become a positive, um, contributing member of, um, the community. I do have one final question on the school audit item. So the funding model is we get one health of all the school audit items, seventy of them in the beginning. And health, the other health is when we complete everything, all seventy items. My concern is, there are fifteen schools involved. In case, I think we probably haven't done all the outreach in every school, in case we need to change some of the items, remove some. Would that be considered, "Well, you didn't complete that." So I want to have a little bit more flexibility in how we do the school walk i, audit items.
Yeah, the way it's written right now, so it'd be, be half, uh, as soon as, if it was to be successful tonight, it would be half of all the, all the funds now, and then it would be the, the last half would occur when all the walk i, items are done at the end. So, that, that is how it's currently written.
Because I can imagine, a lot of times, we think, "Okay, we should improve this, removing that land to improve traffic." Some people would object, "No, you shouldn't do that. That would make things worse." Then we might not complete that item, because we might want to do another item. So, by locking us into all seventy items, we cannot change even one thing, and we don't get the other health of, of the funding, unless we complete everything.
So, so-
Is that the agreement right now?
No, that's, that's not how I would see it working in practice. I mean, right now, we, we have the intent for those specific seventy-seven locations, twelve different schools, that's true. But we'll, we'll, you know, through here, we're, we're meeting with Apple, uh, at a, a very frequent schedule to go over the progress of our various projects. Now, as we see that something may change, because you're, you're correct, when you have that many locations and, and improvements, things will change. Well, we'd be reporting those to, to Apple as, as those projects move along, and I would, and I would expect that there'd be the flexibility for us to be able to communicate that to them, and there'd be some, uh, there'd be partnering to adjust that as, as would be needed. I think, right, what the intent of this is, is there's, there's one point two million, two, two million dollars for school walk audit items, and, um, and that's, that's, that's gonna be the thing that takes the longest in this, uh, in this funding, uh, program. And we would just communicate those needs, and, and, and I would predict that there would be some changes there. That's why, you know, having that, that flexibility at a staff le, level to, to make those changes with Apple makes sense.
It seems makes more sense to say, if we are seventy percent complete, they will give us all the remaining of the funding, right? Because they are trusting us to finish the last thirty percent, but the current agreement, it sounds like, they don't trust us.
Well, I think a good-
You have to complete, otherwise I won't give you the rest.
I think a good perspective to ke, to keep is, on, on most grants that the city would receive, we won't, we wouldn't get any of the, any of the grant dollars until the project is complete. That, that would be more of the typical.
For like, the VTF grant funding, or like, inclusive playground, usually we don't get the funding until-
Till the project is complete.
The project is complete.
That, that's correct, so-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and there's a reason for that, you know. I think they get, they get tired of incomplete projects.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Hey, I'm gonna bring a motion. I move that we, uh, first authorize the city manager to execute a multi-year grant donation agreement, per the conditions specified in attachment A, in the amount of nine million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars for the funding of select projects identified in the 2016 bicycle transportation plan, 2018 pedestrian plan, school walk audit, and Mary Avenue Protected Bike Way. Two, authorize the director of Public Works to apply excess donation funds from any one, uh, completed project to other projects identified in the donation as needed, and per the conditions specified in exhibit A of the grant agreement. Three, approve a budget appropriation for fiscal year nineteen twenty, totaling nine million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. Four, authorize the hiring of a new two-year limited-term assistant engineer level position at a cost not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. And five, designate the mayor, or as scheduling-based needs require, a non-recused council member selected by the mayor as the council representative at weekly or regular meetings with city staff and Apple representatives to work on the completion of phase one projects, and start planning the next set of partnership opportunities. And that's my motion.
I second.
Okay, vote with your lives.
Oh, and I will send this, uh, language for number five to the city.
Okay, great.
Can, can I respond to Elango's question? I really appreciate that you bring to our attention that any excessive fund, um, will be up to the director of Public Wor, Works to reallocate. However, the reallocation is only limited to the set of projects that's in the current funding. So, I think that, that should be okay. It's not going to be allocated to any other project, so.
Sorry. Motion carries with syncs for accusing.
So if I'm correct, we're going back to item seventeen now? Okay.
Unless there's any other items you wish to move around.
No, that's fine. So this is the public hearing to consider and approve the CIP and the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty, the adoption of the recommended budget, and establishment of the appropriation limit, and related actions, or take other action to approve interim expenditures. Okay, so we're ready for the staff report. Anybody wants to speak on this, please submit a card.
A lot of questions on this.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, city council members. Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, uh, here to give you a very brief presentation on, uh, the final budget hearing and adoption. Uh, before we get started on what we'll be covering in today's presentation, a little bit of recap. Uh, the fiscal year nineteen twenty proposed budget was printed and made available on May first. On May thirteenth, we conducted the proposed budget study session, where we went over in-depth, um, rec, funding recommendations as part of the fiscal year twenty budget. Uh, as part of that session, there were additional items that were, uh, staff is now recommending to add to that original proposed budget. In addition, uh, council asked for some follow-up items, um, at that budget study session. Um, today we'll cover some additional staffing, um, that was recommended as part of the proposed budget study session, and some additional staffing since then. Uh, we'll go over changes to the capital improvement project, uh, program since the, uh, May thirteenth meeting, and then we'll cover some next steps, um, after that. So, community funding approval process, um, this was something that, uh, council gave us direction, uh, on how to change this process, or some recommendations as part of the budget process last year. Uh, some of those changes included, uh, the review of eligibility by administrative services. Um, previously, uh, admin services would actually review and recommend funding. The changing made it such that, um, admin services would review the eligibility. We would then, of those that were, applications that were eligible, uh, give those applications to the Parks and Rec Commission, who would then review and rank the applications, and finally recommend funding, uh, recommendations to the city council. Uh, in addition to, as part of this process, the Parks and Rec Commission also is recommending, um, some funding for the historical society. So as part of the ranking process, Historical Society did submit a request. Um, it did not make it, uh, to the proposals that are being, uh, recommended before you this evening. However, the Parks and Rec Commission did feel it was important, uh, to have some kind of standard funding for the Historical Society, uh, set kind of based on their historical rate for, uh, community funding, at about fifteen thousand dollars a year, uh, and that the funding would be guaranteed. So not necessarily as part of a community funding process, but more similar to some of our sister cities, where they get a guaranteed five thousand dollars, um, per fiscal year. In addition, the Parks and Rec Commission also recommended, uh, funding cap per applicant of twenty thousand, and also would like council to consider, considering an overall funding cap, so just giving them, um, a sense of no more than X amount of dollars to be allocated toward community funding. The, uh, ten proposals that the Parks and Rec Commission did recommend be brought forward are, uh, in front of you here on this screen, totaling eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, so the first column shows the nonprofit organization requesting the funds. The second is a, a program or project or event that they're requesting to be funded, and the final column is the funding level that they requested. Uh, we do have staff available, uh, from Parks and Rec, and I believe a, a member from our Parks and Rec Commission, should there be, uh, any questions on the community funding. We've also provided the applications, uh, to those that, uh, top ten list as part of an attachment. Uh, other items, uh, new items that were not previously discussed in the proposed budget. Um, so originally, we brought forth a budget across all funds of almost one hundred and six million dollars. Uh, to that, uh, dollar amount, we were requesting to add an accounting technician, community shuttle, which you heard, uh, earlier this evening, an additional depreciation expense. This is outside of the general fund, uh, that we were putting together the budget. Um, we just did not have time to add these expenses in, we want to add them in now. Uh, some contingency funding that was missed to make it consistent across all budget units. Uh, the removal of the H-VAC request for the, uh, the Environmental Ed Center. And that would have brought our total to, um, a hundred, almost a hundred and nine million dollars. In addition to that, um, we'll cover the capital improvement program in just a moment. Uh, the total of that capital improvement project, program, sorry, is almost fifteen million dollars. In addition, we need to budget for the transfer out of the dollars from the capital reserve to those projects, so that's the additional of fourteen million. Uh, you can see there's also that fourteen million dollar revenue on the other side, so we really just net, uh, the fourteen point eight million. Uh, the nine million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars related to bike ped projects that are funded by a donation from Apple. You'll also see the offsetting revenue there. And then the additional assistant, uh, engineer limited term position at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So if council were to approve, um, all of the changes, um, approve the proposed budget as it was presented with the addition of these changes, we'd be looking at a total budget across all funds for fiscal year twenty of a hundred, a little over a hundred and forty-eight million dollars. There were also some requests, um, for follow-up or more information on as part of the proposed budget study session. Those included a per-capita comparison, uh, staffing allocation, community funding, some additional analysis on the accounting technician, and some additional festival analysis. Uh, those are all included as attachments, um, as part of this item, and again, staff is available, should there be any questions on those items. Um, for staffing, this is a chart to kind of break down how we got to the staffing, um, of where we're recommending today. So last year's budget had two hundred and one point seven five positions. We went ahead and added and deleted some positions as part of fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. Um, then when, as part of the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, we're request, requesting to add four additional positions, which brings us to a total of two hundred and two point seven five benefited positions. Uh, the cost of those four positions, um, are laid out in this chart by department. Um, so overall, adding the four positions would add a little over, uh, five hundred and seven thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, the cost. Uh, uh, the last slide I have to present before handing it over, uh, to, uh, interim director, uh, Lee, uh, will be to talk about our appropriations limitation. This is, um, uh, a limitation, uh, that we have to calculate every year, which basically ensures that we are not overtaxing our residents. Um, and right now, our limit for fiscal year, uh, eighteen, nineteen, is a little over a hundred million. And so a good way to look at this is a proceeds from some of our biggest areas, our property sales tax, uh, transient occupancy tax. Those range at close to the fifty to fifty-five million dollars. So we are well under this hundred million dollar limit. If we ever got above this limit, we would have to issue some kind of rebate or refund, uh, to our residents, uh, because, again, it's just a way to limit to make sure we're not overtaxing our residents. So it's a, a calculation we do every year. Um, with that, I'll hand the presentation over, uh, to interim director of Public Works, Roger Lee.
All right. The best part of the presentation, talk about projects that we're gonna build. So, so what this is, is the, is the projects that we're, uh, we're proposing for funding for next, uh, next fiscal year. Um, some of these, I'll point out, uh, we're, we're at the direction of council and earlier council, uh, study session. So the library expansion is one. Um, just as a reminder, ten, ten million dollar project, uh, five million is, is in this proposed budget to, uh, do the expansion. Um, as Councilman Paul mentioned, we've had a, a, a couple of good working group meetings on, on the topic. Um, we are looking at, uh, you know, just, just because we've, we've been hearing clearly, uh, about value and time is, is an important component to this project, uh, we're looking seriously at, at proceeding with a design, uh, build, um, delivery method, uh, as opposed to a design bid build that we normally do. Um, you know, construction of this project, uh, we, we'd be looking at, at getting bridging documents in right away. Um, and, uh, there could be opportunities to save some time in, in doing that. Um, and then ultimately, the project could be built, uh, you know, within two, you know, twenty-four to thirty months, we would have a project complete. But that's what we want to beat. We want to beat the, the price as well. But, but just do know that the, uh, the budget here is five million. The total project currently is at ten million, and that's what we want to beat the number on. Um, I'm not gonna go through each one of these, these, these that you have seen before. I think the, um, one, one dimension would be, um, like the all-inclusive, uh, play area is noted here. Um, what to note there, uh, of course, is , uh, there's a one point four four million dollar grant. Um, the city would be contributing about one point two three million of, of, of that, uh, of the five point five, uh, total, and donations would, uh, are, uh, would be about two point eight five million. Um, but, as we mentioned before, um, this is an example of a project where the city would have to encumber all these funds, and, and, uh, you know, fundraising would occur, um, and then the grant dollars would, would follow after the project is complete. Um, one change that occurred is the streetlight installation. That was, uh, that earlier had been at thirty thousand. We're, um, we're going to, we're proposing- We're going to, we're proposing to go to a total of 75,000. The purpose of that is just to timely address some of the backlog that we have on streetlight installations. This is where, you know, pole, there's just streetlights that are missing throughout the city and then doing some infill. And I apologize, I went back past a couple of projects, like the bicycle wayfinding implementation. You're going to see that on July 16th, when we come back with all of our different bike and ped projects. I'll mention that shortly. And the capital project support and the CIP, Plenary Planning and Design, those are things that are now incorporated in the operating budget. That is why they're no longer going to be showing up in the CIP. Now, all the other list of projects that you see, you know, in this area here, those are the Apple, the Apple projects that we've mentioned. So, what's not included, well, and so what that happens is, these, those are now summed down here at the end. So, those projects are in the, in the proposed CIP, and they're just all summed in one spot.
So, Roger, the Linda Vista Trail, that's, that's not the project that the individual was donating the land for?
It is, and that would be-
Okay, that's not an Apple project, then?
That's right.
You had it circled there, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, if you look at the ones that are bolded here on the, on the left, and I apologize that text is so small, those are the Apple projects. But like, the Linda Vista Trail is not, that's why you're not seeing a value here now. But that will, that will be a project that we'll discuss on July 16th.
Okay, because a resident did send me a letter about that, very concerned that this had been removed, because we would lose that land donation if we don't come up with the money.
Staff had heard the council's desire to confirm the prioritization of projects, and that's, that's what's coming on July 16th. And I'll, I'll talk about, I only have two slides.
So, but then it's on this page. Are we approving that?
No.
How come it's included here? Then it shouldn't be here.
No, it's there. It's the proposed change.
Yeah, you can see the-
It's minus 2.2 million.
Oh, it's changing. So, you're removing that, right, for now.
Right, for now, but we will come back. We don't, yeah, because the person donating the land was pretty clear that he wanted, I mean, he may be willing to have a little flexibility, but not put it off indefinitely.
Good to know. All right, then the other, the other change is the solar EV chargers. That's, that's here. You know, originally, we had multiple sites, and as we said in the last study session, the, the grant dollars just weren't, weren't as much as we had originally hoped that they would be, so we've reduced it down to just one site at the sports center. And getting grants of 122,000, so we have $43,000 of our own cost. And it's a, this is a unique system that feeds the, it feeds the power that's not being used by cars that may be utilizing the chargers back into the building. You know, we're estimating that that may, about $3,000 a year savings for our PG&E bill, or the SVC bills, and that, so at $43,000, $3,000 a year, you know, maybe 12, 12 or so year payback on that project. And I think, and the last was the McCollum Community, Community Garden improvements. That's the 1.5 million that you see down there. And, you know, from, you know, listening to the last council item on this, you know, that's, that's just an amount to build the project, but, you know, similar to the library expansion, engaging the gardeners, looking for opportunities for them to do volunteer work, really defining what the city has to provide, and, and doing just that, and then having volunteerism take, take over the rest. So, it would definitely be my goal to have it come in under the 1.5 million. So, going to the next slide. So, projects for the July 16th meeting, bike and ped projects. So, you know, going, going through our entire list of newly funded projects, confirming the priorities with council, identifying any additional funding needs that are, that will be needed on those projects that will occur on July 16th, and the prioritization. So, that's why you're not seeing those projects in this, in the CIP for right now.
Yeah, one more.
Oh, that's right.
So, I have one question with regard to the library expansion project. So, the JPA had an extra amount of money from, from the hours that we were already receiving, but some other libraries caught up, and we ended up having a bit of a surplus, something along lines of 400 something thousand dollars. So, 400 this year, 400 the following year. Is there any way in our current budget that we can reflect those JPA dollars that we assigned for design of a library expansion project? Or is that something that, because it comes from an external source, doesn't ultimately get reflected in our budget? Because it is part of this particular project, and I wanted to make sure that those dollars, those dollars are reflected in the overall project budget at this point.
I believe they currently are. I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting to the right page to be able to-
Okay, great.
So, as part of page 108 in the budget document, where we talk about our general fund classification of fund balance, there is now a, an assigned reserve for the library expansion, and in this year, it's $352,719. And so, that's basically the holding place where we hold those dollars to say we've allocated them to say we're going to use them for that purpose.
Is, is there any way to reflect them here in that amount? Because it is effectively part of the CIP budget. I guess this is, this is a separate CIP document, correct? This is, this falls under Roger and-
It is, but it all rolls back into the main operating budget?
Okay.
Right, so, as we go forward with different agreements for, for design, we would use those funds?
Right, of course. But in terms of this CIP budget document, because this table comes from, I forget what page, but it was the CIP projects document, is there any way to reflect that extra money that we have for this particular project there? Perhaps, you know, in the, in the first, in the first column where it says 10 million 50,000, you then take, you know, 5 million 50,000 in the CIP budget, or at least, you know, in the third column, to put an asterisk and perhaps footnote it within the CIP document to refer to, for example, page 108 of the budget document, to let the public know if they're looking at the CIP document, that in fact, for the design, we have allocated approximately another $640,000.
So, I'm a little confused. So, the 350,000 from JPA should be on top of the 5 million dollars here?
That's correct.
That's what you are trying to say?
Yes.
So, we should have that listed separately?
Well, I feel like if it's, if this is in our-
So, the budget for library should be at 5.3-
More like 5.6 million.
Five million.
Well, because we, we allocated a two-year allocation-
Two years, yeah.
And that's 300 something thousand dollars for each year.
Okay, so 5.7 million dollars should be total.
Something like that, five, between 5.6 to 5.7 million dollars.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. So, yes, we could modify the spreadsheet that was accompanied the CIP, and we would increase it to 5 million to, the 5 million plus the 352, plus what was expected for the second year.
For the, right.
Right? It would be that total amount, and then in revenue, then, we would show those $2 amounts for this year and next year.
Sure.
That would be offsetting, and then we would update the project narrative to include, include that.
Right, good point. So, you do have an existing column for that, where revenues could just be described as JPA money, and if we wanted to annotate, we could even indicate that that particular revenue source is supposed to be for design, which of course, is at the very beginning of our efforts here.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could indicate that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. So, for this item, actually, I want to clarify something. So, I think the initial $10 million for library expansion include a 5.8 million for library expansion, plus 1.5 million for the parking. And at that time, I proposed 5 million, but I was really thinking 5 million for the library expansion only, not thinking about parking. So, I think it makes sense to split this into two separate projects. They are independent, they can go in parallel, not really one after, it doesn't have to be one after another, so that, because really, two different teams would consider different considerations. Parking would be totally different consideration from library usage, right? So, then, this funding, what we are looking at, 5.7 million dollars should be for library expansion, and I'm willing to consider a separate item, library parking enhancement. Maybe we can have $1 million for that, to look at the options to improve library parking.
I would not favor separating it, because you could build the library expansion, you couldn't open it until you had the additional parking.
Not true. The, the additional parking is not a municipal code requirement, as I understand, and it's not even a county library requirement. It was, it came from the EIR study, so it's more like a mitigation for a project. So, it's like any mitigation for Apple Park. Your mitigation is kind of optional. It's nice if you implement, but you don't have to implement it before you build a project.
That's my understanding of the motion that we supported as well, that this allocation was for the expansion of the program room in the library. But Roger, at one of our recent working group meetings, did mention that that was the common understanding as well, but that we would be going in parallel with some initial studies on the parking. And I would, I would certainly support separating it out as a project, with the understanding that we do want to deliver it, or at least some kind of analysis to show that we'll be able to offset the effects of the added patronage of the library.
Definitely, we want to improve parking.
And I would like to mention, you know, in conjunction with something that we've already decided upon earlier tonight, you have something like a shuttle program, other traffic type of mitigations that you could be undertaking. There are parking lots surrounding this civic center area, over at Eaton, over at private parking areas, and perhaps we can be moving some of the employee parking, not all of them necessarily, but even, you know, 15 or 20 spots, if we can come into agreement with a private owner or something. I mean, it seems like that could be a good use of our resources if we're looking into the parking issue as a, as a separate item.
Yeah, I think I mentioned that also, we should also consider traffic demand management for the entire Civic Plaza, because we are asking all the future project, the modern project, to consider traffic demand management. Maybe the city should have some practice in that. So, maybe the item is not exactly library parking, but civic center parking improvement. And that could include adding parking space, but also different traffic management, multimodal transportation.
All right. What about the McClellan Bike Lane? And if it gets built, the Regnart Creek Trail would also feed the library. Would that mitigate the parking requirement at all by any number of spaces?
Yeah, that would all be an input into what Vice Mayor Chow was saying. That would all be an input to the analysis that we would do.
Okay, so, all right. Given that, then, that's why I would support that, that idea of separating it.
I mean, I just want to clarify, I don't know the details of the, what environmental review has been done for this already or not, or what mitigation measures were in there, but typically, under CEQA, you need to implement your mitigation measures before the, before moving forward with the project. So, it, it may not be that it can be timed that way. Again, I haven't looked at the specifics here.
Right, but, but you could build the library room, you just couldn't open it until you had the, the mitigation.
Yeah, I know, but it does take longer to plan and build the library, so I'm, I assume, I assume by the time we complete that, the parking would be done in parallel already. But I don't know, do we have to implement all the mitigation, because we had a very long list of traffic mitigation from the general plan EIR?
Again, I haven't looked at all the specifics of this project. I just would say that you might want to have some flexibility in, in how you deal with the impacts of the library expansion within the budget that's been allocated.
So, let's say we have EIR for Main Street. Am I supposed to expect all the mitigation identified in the Main Street EIR should be implemented before the project was built?
Unless the mitigation says otherwise. Some mitigation measures say when they need to be implemented, some happen later, some happen earlier.
Well, well-
Typically, it would be-
How about as part of our investigation into it, we look at what is required based upon our, you know, documents governing the master plan for the Civic Center thus far, and if it's fairly flexible, then let's proceed accordingly. And if it's not, you know, we can figure out what the parameters of our, of our future, you know, actions could be, you know, what the boundaries are.
I did say that you're, the, the parking study that you're embarking on right now could be a supplement to the environmental analysis for the Civic Center Master Plan.
Right, because I'm not, I'm not aware of anything within the library component of the Civic Center Master Plan that, that corresponded with those particular options, such as, for example, this specific option, perch option number four. I don't recall seeing numbers that said, "Well, if you do this, you have to have X number of parking spaces." I, I don't remember that number, but maybe it is in fact in there.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there is a parking number that's associated with the square footage of the library expansion.
Okay.
But now, I think we're looking at that. We're going to look at, at transportation and management. We're going to talk, we're going to look at other inputs, as Roger said, to see what parking really is necessary. And with that, you can supplement the environmental analysis that occurred previously for the Civic Center.
Okay, very good, very good. Thanks.
Okay.
Now, I had, I had one more slide.
All right, yeah, finish, and then we'll go to public comment.
Yeah, and, and lastly, so, so the bike and ped projects are not included in the CIP, and also, City Hall is not included in the, in the CIP. And so, you know, our intentions that we would bring this back late, late summer, fall to talk to council more about the City Hall project, and that's it.
Okay. So, I have a bunch of cards here. Each get three minutes. Try to not use them all. First, Steve Garrity, followed by Chris Mandible, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Steve.
That was Chris Mandible. Honorable Mayor Scharf and council members, my name is Steve Garrity. I am the vice president of Friends of Stevens Creek Trail. As I'm sure you're aware, our mission is to promote community involvement, pride in the completion, enhancement, and enjoyment of trails and wildlife corridors in the Stevens Creek watershed. Cupertino has a unique opportunity to create another valuable community and regional resource for hiking, biking, and enjoyment of the outdoors. A generous offer has been made to donate a one-third mile trail segment to Cupertino for development as the Linda Vista Trail. This trail would also become another segment of the Stevens Creek Trail. As I'm sure the council is aware, the Cupertino portion of the Stevens Creek Trail now ends at McClellan Ranch. The donated segment would take another significant step towards the vision of a regional trail that links the San Francisco Bay to the Santa Cruz Mountains. The Linda Vista Trail route already exists. I've walked it, as others have. The city has an estimate of what it'll take to develop the trail, and as a bonus, the trail donor has done a lot of homework with the trail neighbors to mitigate their concerns about the trail. The leverage provided by the property gift makes this project a great community benefit at a minimal cost. Perhaps, please find a way to keep this project moving forward in the fiscal year 2019-20 capital improvement plan. Perhaps, there are some lower-cost options that can at least get the trail open in the near term. The opportunity from the trail donor is here now. Cupertino should embrace it now. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this at the council.
So, thank you. I agree, we should not let this donation go.
I have a question. So, I try to find what exactly, where exactly is Stevens Creek Trail? It seems in Cupertino, it only exists inside Blackberry Farm and McClellan Ranch.
Yes, right.
It stops at Stevens Creek Boulevard. It doesn't go to the bay, as you said.
Not yet.
And there is a big, a big section missing from Stevens Creek Boulevard to, I don't know, it's very far.
Yes.
It's far away from being finished.
As you probably are aware, the Four Cities feasibility study a number of years ago looked at different alignments for the different sections. Sunnyvale and Mountain View, several years ago, city councils elected to take a step on the segment, the next segment, being in the Sunnyvale-Mountain View area. For ones that are south of that, or north of Stevens Creek, there were no decisions to move forward. It was just a study to look at what the options were. Those are all that's been done to date.
What's the estimated cost, do you know, to finish that part?
Finish which part?
From Stevens Creek to connect to the Mountain View.
There really isn't an estimated cost. I would add that there's Santa Clara County Park trail options and Mid Peninsula Trail options that take it all the way up to Santa Cruz Mountains. And we're working with Mid Pen now on how or where they could designate trails within the Montebello Open Space Preserve as Stevens Creek Trail. the Montebello Open Space Preserve as Stevens Creek Trail. But there's no cost estimate.
So for now, going north, it doesn't go anywhere. But then connecting from McClellan Ranch to Linda Vista Park, is there any bike trail it connects to?
Yeah, we connect to Linda Vista Park, right.
But does that connect to any bike trail that goes to somewhere?
Any bike trails, you say?
Yeah.
Other than what the Linda Vista Park offers up, I'm not aware of any.
So it just goes to Linda Vista Park?
Right.
So basically, this Linda Vista Trail just connects Linda Vista Park with McClellan Ranch?
Yes.
It doesn't really connect any existing bike trail? Because you are saying this will connect the bay with the mountain.
The vision of, the vision for the Stevens Creek Trail was, the vision was to connect from the bay to the Santa Cruz Mountains.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and there is a section in Cupertino that was proposed that didn't go forward. That happened before I was on the council. I think it was on Farlap?
Yes, those, those were part of the feasibility options that Cupertino supported. They looked at different routes in there on streets, for example.
Right.
But those are not going forward anywhere. It was just, the study was the end of it for the time being.
I think I might add that there was also a proposal at one point to get the trail to extend, to continue south of Linda Vista all the way to the county park, right?
And that would be an excellent option.
So that vast, that vast area, which includes the Stevens Creek reservoir, today only accessible on the very dangerous Foothill Boulevard.
Yes.
I think the vision is eventually, right? And yes, it's going to take a long time and so forth, but gradually we build pieces into this thing.
Yes.
Last time, there was also a speaker talking about this would connect to the Silicon Valley with the, to even the sea. I tried to look at this trail, I couldn't find it. Turns out, okay, they don't exist. Where I connect something, something that doesn't exist yet, with something else that doesn't exist yet.
Right. But I was pointing out, as the gentleman just pointed out as well, there are some parks between here and Highway 35. Stevens, the Santa Clara County Park, the Tony Look Trail, for example, exists. It could be a candidate alignment for Stevens Creek Trail. There are trails in the Mid Peninsula Park, Montebello, that exist now. Stevens Creek Trail, Nature Park Trail is already there.
Yeah.
We are going to work with them to help figure out where those alignments could be. It used to be Canyon Road was an alignment possibility for Stevens Creek Trail, but the Mid Pen folks don't believe that's as viable, at least as it's close by to this Santa Clara County Park.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I would also point out, and you can confirm this, this trail would give accessibility of folks going to Kennedy/Mona Vista schools from that trail segment to the north, right?
Yes.
So that adds some principal value to the schools.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Chris Mandible, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Sorry.
Sorry.
Chris.
Mendible.
Mendible, okay.
Honorable Mayor Scharf and council members, we've gone over my name already. I'm the associate director for the Friends of Stevens Creek Trail, and as an advocacy organization for the trail and wildlife corridor, I would like to emphasize how important the Linda Vista Trail property is to our mission. The Linda Vista section would significantly increase the length of the Stevens Creek Trail in Cupertino, and is a natural easy extension. We believe this piece of land is truly a unique and priceless gift for the entire community. I'm sure you've heard over and over again the positive impacts that trails have toward reducing global warming, how they help reduce traffic and carbon emissions. But I would like to speak to you about the physical and mental health benefits of a community trail. Countless studies have been shown that show the mental health benefits of getting outdoors and connecting with nature are very important. What easier and more convenient way to get exercise, fresh air, and peace from the craziness of Silicon Valley than a community trail? In particular, I think of our youth population. I have children that attended Lindbrook and Miller Middle School. I am well aware of the stress and pressure that come from attending high caliber schools. Our youth need to be better equipped to deal with stress and anxiety. The trail just blocks from Deanna College, Mona Vista High School, and Lincoln Elementary can provide such a tool as well as educational opportunities. On a personal level, I feel lucky that the office where the Friends of Stevens Creek Trail is located at McClellan Ranch, just steps away from the Creek and Wildlife Corridor. How many of you can say your stress levels go down as soon as you get to the office? The deed to the Linda Vista Trail section is once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and has the potential of benefiting the community for generations to come. The Friends of Stevens Creek Trail would like to respectfully request that you can reconsider and retain appropriations for the Linda Vista property. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Subha Kumarswamy.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Boy, I would really like it if somebody bought the east side a park. We don't have any parks. We have a half acre park for 5,000 people. We've been trying to buy the Lawrence Midi Park for probably 10 years now. I believe Apple has ponied up the money, as they should, because they are supposed to deliver us a one acre park that is been since the inception of when they purchased the rights to a prunage. There was a park already over there that was set to go with condo complex that was never built. A park has to be given to Cupertino, a one acre. It is part of the deal. I believe, from everything I have been led to believe, that the $8 million for that park is supposed to be for Lawrence Midi. I don't know, I have some suspicions of why this hasn't moved forward, but time is running out. The east side is park deficient. We need to move on this. I, we're running into problems with, we have no park equity in the city. The east side needs parks. So if Apple is not going to purchase Lawrence Midi, we need to start talking about how we get funds. If Apple won't do it, we need to get city funds to purchase the property. It is our right for the eastern side of Cupertino that we have park equity. I have sit in here for 15 years, hearing about all the wonderful parks in Mona Vista. That's wonderful, that's great. My neighborhood came late to the party. We annexed in 2000. Our park that we were promised in 1952 is now Sage Apartments Complex, and that was the playground for our neighborhood. That is the history of the deal. So we have been scrambling for parkland, and I think it is high time that this city made a priority, a concentrated priority, to start coughing up money and purchasing land for the east side. I have been coming here for 17 years. I, we are very patient. We have a half acre, which was where our water tanks were, but the time is here, it is now. I think we need to start talking to Apple about coming forward with the one acre park. Apple Park is done. We need to move forward on Lawrence Midi. It is an equity issue. But I'm glad that Cupertino is getting the parkland, because, but when I'm an old lady, I sure hope that I have a bus to get to it. Thank you.
Jennifer, would you consider reaching out to our, our local county supervisor as well on that? Just to clarify, the city council did about four and a half years ago, allocate approximately $8 million for the acquisition and the development of Lawrence Midi, and essentially right now it's owned by the county. And any, any kind of residential support to our local county supervisor would be quite helpful.
I, I thought that the 8 million was from Apple. I don't know where Apple needs to give us a one acre park.
Right, it was, it was originally a park mitigation fee for the Apple campus, and it was, it was in fact dedicated over for the acquisition and development of Lawrence Midi. And Lawrence Midi, in fact, is a, is about seven acres total.
Yes.
If you include the, the land all the way down.
But it's not, I'm just saying, is the 8 million still available?
It's still allocated.
Okay, then I'm just saying, I, I understand there are four or five different entities involved in Lawrence Midi. Believe me, I know the history of the area way far beyond anything I ever wanted. I don't know what's holding it up now, but maybe Apple can come forward and start talking to the entities to push this forward. I don't care if they call it Steve Jobs Park, that's fine with me, but the time is now, and we need to move on it, because we have no park equity in this city. Anyway, sorry, I'm sorry to get upset about this.
But what Darcy stated about contacting the county supervisors.
I already spoke to the county on another issue today, which you all may be aware of.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'm just saying, you guys have the wherewithal. Apple can reach out, they built, Apple paid for.
It's not Apple money anymore. The money is in our pocket.
Good.
It's park mitigation.
Right, we have the money, it's not a question of the money.
It's not Apple's money anymore.
Okay, Apple spent beaucoup bucks to expand Lawrence Expressway on ramps, off ramps, closed Calvert Drive for nine months, rebuilt half of the Lawrence on and off ramps by the Luckys on Lawrence. I mean, this has been going on for three years. So someone needs to reach out. If anybody's watching, you know.
Can I clarify something? So when we approved Apple Park, the city sold the prunage.
Right.
To Apple. How come we didn't ask Apple to dedicate part of that land that's in a much better location for a park? We didn't.
Well, it's in the middle of their campus.
But prunage, or part of prunage could have been a park. So we sold the prunage for, what, $30 million?
$5 million.
Right, it's in the middle of their campus.
$30 million, is it? $15 million. Shouldn't that $15 million be a park fund? Because we sold the public street. That $15 million is gone?
It's not gone.
It's spent to, don't know why.
Yeah, we use it all to improve our streets. Right into all the, all the pavement and why we have a, a pavement condition.
Which could come from general fund, right? Okay.
That's how it was used.
I'm just saying, you know, if we can't get Lawrence Midi, it's on the back burner, but I would really appreciate it if the city started looking around Rancho or some other area to get the neighborhood a park.
Lawrence Midi's on the front burner, not the back burner.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, I can't really read this. Subha, followed by Jennifer Furlong, followed by Donna Austin.
Yeah, hi, Subha Kumarswamy, long time resident of Cupertino, been here for 15 years. So first, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about the trail. Specifically, I'm here to talk about the Linda Vista Trail. You know, as a long time resident here and an avid runner and biker, I've been using the McAllen Ranch Trail, which is the, you know, very short trail. Allowed to see the extension from McAllen Ranch all the way to Linda Vista Park. You know, my kids, both of them are going to, you know, one of them went to Mona Vista, now in the college, and the second one is a cross-country runner. And, you know, these kids are running, you know, sometimes the fire trail, going up to the, there is a wire, and having a trail right in the backyard, and be able to loop around, you know, from the Mona Vista all the way to Park. And that will give a, you know, a much bigger opportunity for them. So, you know, in a sense, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's investment that goes on, specifically if the donor here is willing to provide a, you know, a gift to the city. I don't understand why it's a difficult option to use the gift and be able to leverage that and, you know, extend the trail. And literally, it's a one-third mile, so it should be much easier. And the last point I want to emphasize is, I think the original estimate was something like 2.2 million, but I think there's a low-cost option we should consider, and, you know, the opportunity is here and now. So really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer Furlong, followed by Donna Austin, followed by Louis Spiller. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. Good evening, council. My name is Jennifer Furlong, and I am the executive director of the Cupertino Historical Society and Museum. And I'm here this evening, or morning, whatever time it is, to implore you to follow the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to add us as a line item on the city's budget, so that we are secured funding for the foreseeable future. I'm here to sing for my supper. We provide services to this community that no one else provides. We are the repository of the city's history. We actually have two book projects with local authors in the works right now. We provide three to five lectures, actually, we provide quarterly lectures that are free to the public, and three to five exhibits a year. We've actually mounted, and are in the process of mounting, an exhibit that opens tomorrow evening on early computing technology with the collection of Italian entrepreneur Marco Bollone that is worth over $2 million. And that's in our museum, our little tiny jewel box of a museum. And we are so excited to share that amazing collection with the community, and this is a huge win for the community of Cupertino. Our last lecture series was on the Transcontinental Railroad and was so well-attended that we were almost over capacity in the Cupertino Room in the Quinlan Center. I know there's been some talk about why we receive space in Quinlan and other organizations don't, and trying to put a dollar amount on that, on that space. And I'm here to tell you that you're really getting a bargain for what we provide for the city. But also, we were written into the founding documents of the Quinlan Center when the Quinlan Center was built. There was a provision that there would be space for a historical museum and an office. And we have sort of unceremoniously been moved out of our office, so we're now operating without an office in the Quinlan Center. But we are a thriving organization, we're a forward-thinking organization, we are fiscally responsible, we've been in this community for 53 years, and we have a dedicated board of individuals who are very passionate about the future of this organization and securing the future of this organization. And I'm proud to be part of that, and I'm proud to be part of this community. We represent and honor Cupertino's past, but we also realize as an organization that, that history isn't just 100 years ago or 50 years ago, history's happening every day. And we ask you, implore you, to be a part of that, of continuing our mission to bring history to the community and preserving our future with the city of Cupertino. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
What is the amount of the line item that you're requesting?
The funding amount, 15,000 was what was mentioned, and that's what we requested in our community funding grant, but quite honestly, compared to other cities and what they provide for their historical societies and museums, $15,000 is a drop in the bucket, but we would gladly accept $15,000.
All right, thank you.
Can I, I'd like to understand, what's your operating budget here, annual operating budget?
Right now, our operating budget is around $100,000, and let this sink in, are you ready? That includes my salary.
So you have one staff member?
Hi. We have a very vibrant volunteer crew. I'm sorry, I haven't had much sleep because of this exhibit, so I apologize that I'm not as composed as I normally am.
Oh, you are so very well spoken.
Okay, thank you. We have a volunteer crew of over 50 individuals who volunteer at our special events, who go into local schools and teach children about the history of this valley and the history of Cupertino, and with our Traveling Trunk Program, which is exceedingly popular. We've even had requests from neighboring school districts to come there and present to their kids. So yes, I am but one, but I'm mighty because of the team that I have.
So I'd like to understand why you, why you lost your office in Quinlan Center.
Quite honestly, Mayor Scharf, this happened before, before my time. I mean, I think, I think there is a space crisis, much like housing in this area.
Right, but if your organization was guaranteed space, then you shouldn't have lost it.
Correct.
I just want to understand, maybe I'm not getting the whole picture here, because there's somebody from.
Maybe there's someone in the audience that could speak to that.
There's somebody from Parks and There's somebody from Parks and Rec or who?
I thought you still have a room.
We still have a, we have a gallery space, but there's an office attached to that space, which is where we had our, our reference library and all of the history files that we maintain. But those are now crammed into the gallery space, which we've now rebuilt for this most recent exhibit, and so they're behind a, you know, a half-wall, like a temporary wall.
So could Director Milks explain what happened, please? Thank you, Jennifer.
And I would just say, this is a brief question and response.
Right, just brief, this is not on the agenda, so.
Okay, so see if I can be very brief with it. A number of years back, there was, and it predated me, so I apologize, but there was a shortage of office space for existing and staffing requirements. So decisions were made, and when they were made, the office was no longer available. However, I would like to come back to you with maybe a possibility or two, maybe we can still talk about what is possible and what isn't.
All right, thank you. I have Donna Austin, followed by Louis Bueller, followed by Carol Stanek. Welcome, Donna. Thank you for staying so late.
My name is Donna Austin, I've been a community member for forty-two years. I, I love Cupertino history. It is unique and different and special. We're the center of innovation. We gather and support history and we try to share it with the community, and that's really our goal. It's, I want to support the Parks and Recreation recommendation that we be a line item every year. We've written grants and gotten them before, I've written a lot of them, and fifteen thousand was two years ago, what we asked. I think this year it was twenty-five. And as she says, we can't pay Jennifer enough for the job she does, she's wonderful, and she is extraordinary, and we really contribute to the community with our talks, history talks, and our wonderful exhibits that we've had. And we, we cross all lines in the community. We do history of different cultures. There's so much going on in Cupertino, and it's special, and we're making history, and if there isn't somebody gathering it and collecting it and sharing it with you, it's going to get lost. And so we want to make sure everybody knows how wonderful we are, our schools and our history. So I totally support what Jennifer said and beg you to put us a line item and support us as we support you in Cupertino. That's what it's all about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Louis Bueller, followed by Carol Stanek, followed by Kitty Moore.
Hello, my name is Louis Bueller.
Sorry, okay.
And I'm a past chair of the Park, of the Cupertino Parks and Recreation Commission and a longtime resident, and I'm here to talk about the Linda Vista Trail. And I wanted to just give a little bit of perspective, that it has long been the city's vision to have a connection, a trail that connects the heart of the city to the county park and to the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, and that, yes, that's a part of the Stevens Creek Trail plan, but it is really something that is very much part of Cupertino, that connection from our city into the hills. And that vision has guided many actions of commissions and councils over the years, including the acquisition of the Stocklemire property, the connection of McClellan Ranch and Blackberry Farm, there used to be a fence between those that some of us used to crawl through in the old days, but they took that down and then they created a beautiful trail that can be used by both pedestrians and bicyclists. And, and that trail, if any of you've been there, is in a very high degree of use today. A lot of people use it, it's a beautiful trail, its only drawback is, as was mentioned, it's not very long, and, but it is highly used. And so the next step in that vision of connecting Cupertino to our natural surroundings is the addition of this Linda Vista Trail. And I will say, the trail actually is, is something, has value in and of itself, if you've walked it. It's a beautiful walk, but clearly, in this case, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, because that walk connects three other pieces of parkland, McClellan Ranch Park, Blackberry Farm, and Linda Vista, and in doing so, creates a beautiful, connected, open park space that will be used to an even greater extent than it is now because it provides access all up and down that corridor. And so I think it's, it's a tremendous asset that we should value, and as a financial person, I have to say, it's very, very cost-effective because the land is being donated, and so any money that we put towards this effort will be leveraged by the donation of the land. And so as you look at this budget, I want to echo what was said earlier, that I hope that you will look at a cost-effective way to keep this project moving, to open Linda Vista Park, to make it accessible, and perhaps to improve it over time, but to keep the appropriation in the current budget so that the land is donated and the project is ultimately completed. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Carol?
Do you know how much is the property, the value of the property?
I don't know that. I am, I am a resident, so I'm not involved in it, but.
I checked the record by the parcel number, the assessed value is about like fifty-six thousand dollars.
That's.
Right, but that's probably the Prop 13 value, not the.
No, it was purchased, I think, August last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And that's the value. And we are asked to invest an improvement of two-point-two million dollars, just so you know that.
I understand, and I, I don't have a point of view about the two-point-two million, I have not studied the budget, and I don't know what that will purchase, but I believe you could open the gates and make that trail accessible, perhaps for less money than two-point-two, and it is really, that is my, what I would urge the council to consider, is to find a way to make the connection, to open the trail, and do it in a cost-effective way.
Yeah, or whoever bought the trail could have offered it to give the city an option to purchase too, and then the city can decide when to improve it, rather than forcing the city to do it this year, so.
Well, I think the city should consider the opportunity it has in hand.
Okay.
And in a point of clarification, the Linda Vista Trail is not part of the CIP proposal tonight, that is on July sixteenth with.
Okay, I think the confusion is that's listed in the budget is being removed.
Only because it had been in the, in the budget on May thirteenth study session.
Okay.
That's the only reason why it's there tonight.
Right, okay, so we will have the opportunity.
On July sixteenth.
On July sixteenth. Will that include different proposals and different amounts, or is it definitely two-point-two million?
No, we're, we're looking at some other, other values to.
Okay.
The project.
All right, great. Carol Stanek, Kitty Moore, and Sharon Blaine, welcome, Carol.
Thank you, hi, Carol Stanek, Parks and Rec Commissioner, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. I wanted to talk just to two issues. One, I, I did write to you, because I didn't see in your packet the, the recommendation portion from the Parks and Rec Commission that said, in addition to the community fund grants, to fund the historical society separately from that, and so I did want to just make sure that you were aware. I was an alternate on the Parks and Rec Commission on, at the time that that recommendation was made, but, you know, per the minutes, the commission recommended the Cupertino Historical Society be removed from the community funding grant process and granted an annual fund from the city, similar to the sister cities, which is what was stated. But I was just afraid that was overlooked because it wasn't in the numbers that I saw, and so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. I also wanted to speak to the Linda Vista Trail, and so I guess the good news is that there will be an opportunity to discuss this some more, I am definitely in favor of keeping that in. Connecting the city residents to nature trails was one of the highest priority items identified during the community outreach for the Parks and Rec system-wide master plan. That is a huge priority for the community. They said, give us trails, give us opportunity to get into nature. Stevens Creek Trail, originating all the way at Shoreline and all the way to the open space south of Linda Park, has been a regional goal for years. Yes, it doesn't exist, but you have to build it in pieces and segments. Thank goodness for the Mountain View City Council that has been building this, starting twenty, twenty-five years ago, to build it in pieces and to connect it. If you start, you can now start in Sunnyvale and get all the way down to Shoreline, and we are working to do our piece here. We did the piece through Blackberry Farm with the Stevens Creek Trail, which is wonderful. Again, it's short, but to extend it all the way south to Linda Vista Park would be phenomenal. And so I'm just going to leave it at that. I hope we can bring this back in July, I hope we can work with the donor. I think we should make a good faith effort to do that. I think the dollars are really unimportant, I think we want to make sure that this trail happens. And I understand why the donor would say, I want to make sure, I don't want to just see this property go away, and so let's work with it, let's, let's take what has been offered to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kitty Moore, followed by Sharon Blaine, followed by Ilango Ganga, welcome, Kitty.
Hi, first I'd like to talk about the library parking.
Are you speaking only for yourself?
This part.
Okay.
The library used to have an agreement to park across the street on Torrey, and I was wondering if maybe that can be revisited, and that could help with evening and weekend parking. And then the next part is, from the Planning Commission, we reviewed the capital improvement program a couple of weeks ago, and our draft resolution had a consistency analysis, and it indicated that we found four to zero, there was an exception in the consistency finding. We found the capital improvement program consistent with the general plan, except there is an issue with regards to parkland, which is not in keeping with the spirit of the general plan. And I have two questions on that, speaking for myself. Does city council have an obligation to consider the Planning Commission consistency analysis? And would prioritization be altered, and, which might consider, you might consider creating a heat map that went back five to ten years, looking at the spending and where it has been within the city, and then looking forward five years to get a sense of whether or not the finding holds true? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I don't understand, what part is not consistent? That's not in our packet, is it?
Right, I asked about that, why our.
It is covered on page eleven and twelve of the staff report for this item.
So what exactly is not consistent?
Do you have our resolution from?
Yes, it's quoted in page eleven and twelve of the staff report.
Okay, so you have, you have the actual resolution with the edits?
But the resolution is not in the packet, it's just quoted.
We do, the packet does discuss staff's analysis of the, of the consistency issue and finds that, that there, you know, identifies the policies in the general plan that deal with park equity, identifies the projects in the CIP, both funded and unfunded, that would help address that, and says that this evidence supports the finding of consistency with those policies, both for this specific plan, this specific CIP before you now, but as, as CIPs are implemented over time, that the, there, you don't need to find that each individual year promotes park equity, although there are policies in here that promote park equity.
So the staff finds it's consistent?
That's our recommendation in the staff report.
But the Planning Commission doesn't think it's consistent, can you explain why?
I think the city attorney explained what we found issues with. I do find it curious that the resolution that we came up with was not given to you. I don't understand.
Yeah, I have to object to that, there wasn't a written resolution, it was a motion, and so the motion is quoted in the staff report.
I would think that our actual resolution as edited would be delivered to the city council to read.
So do you agree with the last sentence of the paragraph that our city attorney is referencing on the staff report, and it states, quote, "The commission did not find the CIP or any component thereof inconsistent with the general plan or these policies, rather the commission's resolution raised the issue of park equity for the council to consider." Would you say that's an accurate statement?
It sounds rather mangled to me.
Mangled in what manner?
Well, we found the capital improvement program consistent with the general plan, except there is an issue with regards to parkland, which is not in keeping with the spirit of the general plan. Now, my phone died, so I might be missing an additional word in there, but that's as close as I could get it, and so it would have been very helpful if we had our actual resolution in your packet. And again, I don't understand why it wasn't put there.
Okay, so.
Like, why did we go to the trouble of that exercise to have to edit it?
Let me just clarify, so, so, so you're, what you're saying is that you did, you did not find it consistent due to this park equity issue? Is that?
Correct, correct, and in the opening paragraph of the draft resolution, we changed the word finding to regarding, and the word consistent to consistency.
Okay, all right.
All right. Well said. Thank you.
Okay, Sharon Blaine, Ilango Ganga, and Jean Bedore.
Members of the council, thank you for hearing our issue tonight. I'm going to take two seconds. I would like you to vote positively on the recommendation of putting the Cupertino Historical Society on the budget as a line item. And the other item that's important to me is the expansion of the library. We need that, and we need parking for the expansion of the library. All of you know that, you go over there and it's a disaster. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being brief. And last, we have Jean Bedore. Anyone, oh, sorry, Ilango Ganga. And Jean Bedore.
I'm Ilango Ganga, speaking for myself. First regarding the parking, the library parking, I have a suggestion. There's a segment of McClellan Road bike lane extension that comes all the way up to Torrey Avenue. That segment from De Anza to Torrey Avenue, people are, you have parking spaces there and people are parking today along the Pacifica, all the way up to, you know, Fairlawn or even beyond. So if you can delay that segment for a little longer until the, until you figure out what to do with the city center and, you know, get more parking spaces, that way, that space can continue to be used for library purposes. Of course, this is in addition to other, other spaces that you can get from, you know, the Cupertino, you know, Eaton School and so on. Okay, the next thing I would like to talk about is regarding the study session, like the CIP study session on May thirteenth, I was there throughout the session, and, you know, there were proposed projects where, proposed projects for financial year twenty twenty, and also planned ones for twenty-one to twenty-four was in there, and then these are the list of the projects, and the list of unfunded projects was, was listed in here, and nothing in there. So, and then there was also financial year twenty twenty-four proposed CIP was there, and then Red Knott Creek Trail feasibility study and design was already included in that list, no amount was listed for future years. Now I'm looking at CIP for financial year twenty twenty, there's an attachment D seven, that's in the agenda packet for this, today's meeting, and in the proposed projects, other unfunded projects, I see Red Knott Creek Trail is inserted. There was no action in the previous study session to discuss about Red Knott Creek Trail or to insert Red Knott Creek Trail in the unfunded projects. This is not right. There was no action from the, you know, council that, that I required you to insert this one in here. Please do remove this. We don't want to repeat this in twenty seventeen. This is how this Red Knott Creek Trail was sneaked in, in twenty seventeen, without any knowledge or never discussed in twenty seventeen plan with the violation of Brown Act. Don't do this again. And the one request I, I have is, Red Knott Creek Trail, if it, if it. And the one request I, I have is Red Knott Creek Trail, if it, if it, you know, it did us a lot of issues, you know, it might be coming up in 2020, it may not be coming up in 2030 depending upon if it has to go through environmental regulatory approvals and so on, it might be a 12 to 18 month delay. There are many complex issues in here. Let's not, let's not bring it in here. If the council decides to approve the construction later, then it might be, it could be amended. So, there's no reason to, you know, have this in, in, in the proposed CIP for 2020. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Jean Bedore. That's the last card I have.
You mean, I get the final word? Anyway, good evening, council. My name is Jean Bedore, and as you know, I'm a resident of Cupertino. You started considering this item at 11 o'clock this evening. And you're finally considering the, the budget for next year, which is probably one of the most important documents that you will be working on all year. Most of the public has given up and gone home. When you are considering this, the documents were not made available until last Wednesday. There were 17 attachments with a lot of detail. And there was new information provided tonight that was not available at that time. This is poor planning by this council. The public deserves better. Now, within the budget, I urge you to reconsider funding for the Linda Vista Trail. This land is being donated. It's an opportunity to leverage the money that you have available for CIP projects. I frankly do not understand the reluctance of this council to accept donations, whether it's Apple or the Linda Vista Trail. Most organizations would take the money and run with it. Thank you.
So, can you, you do understand that no money was being donated for Linda Vista Trail? It's not the same as Apple?
The value of the land is quite high. I will find out, personally find out what the value, you know, or at least a ballpark value of that land is. I mean, given the price of the homes around that area, it has to be considerable. Because it's wide. I mean, I walked that trail.
You can't do anything with it. You can't do anything with it, though.
What did you say the assessed value was as of last year?
$56,000 or $65,000, something around that.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I very much support spending the money necessary for, for, for that trail. But it's $2 million, right?
It's a fantastic, it's a fantastic trail. I mean, I used to crawl through the fence when it was open, you know, and then the locks kept getting progressively stronger and I couldn't hop over the fence anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Can I show the map of the trail, since they talk about so much?
Can, can I see, can you show the, I have a map of the trail, to see that what's really about?
This is, this is coming back in July, we don't have to do this now.
But I think we have a lot of public here who seems not understanding.
Well, I think the problem was that it was on the budget and then removed.
Yeah.
And that, and?
I think the public is requesting for us to add it back in.
Right, which will happen on July 16th.
So, let me, can I talk about that map?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, this pink part, this pink part is the Linda Vista Trail.
It's 1150 at night.
It doesn't connect to anything to the north. That part of the trail doesn't exist yet. This, and Linda Vista Park doesn't go to anywhere yet. There might be connection in the county park far away. However, here, you are seeing these dotted lines are proposed bike trails that actually benefit schools. But we don't have any plan to implement this actual bike trail that leads to schools. We are not doing anything. These dotted lines, we don't have, McLellan, we are implementing that, but the rest of the dotted lines are not in our plan. So, should we prioritize this trail over other bike path project? That's the question you should ask yourself, not just looking at one project, looking at citywide, area-wide. Thank you.
Okay. So, bringing it back to council for comments now. John.
So, I'll start with the Historical Society. And I think we, we definitely need to be preserving, you know, the, the history and making it available to everybody and not letting it kind of disappear from, from our minds. So, I, I would definitely support that. The statement that maybe they'd like it to be higher than the 15,000, I, I think that's very reasonable. They, I heard, you know, 25,000 rather than 15,000, I'm not sure we can, but if it is possible, and I'll at least ask, change it from 15,000 to 20 and put it in the, the budget. So, then I'll leave it up to, I guess, Christina. Can, can we increase it that, to 20 for this year and then let them try for 25 next year?
You can, if there's three of you that would vote to do that, you could increase it to that amount. There is sufficient fund balance. Our revenues right now exceed our expenditures to a tune of about 7 million or so if you were to approve the additional items that are before you this evening. We wouldn't make a vote on next year's budget until we actually hear that unless you want to keep this as a base item, and then it would be included automatically for next year.
Right, so I think that was the goal, to make it a base item, so they don't have to apply for community funding every year. But is that too late for this year?
Nope. The, the, right now is the time.
Okay.
Okay, so then the, the next item is the Linda Vista Trail. And so, I, I'm still a little bit confused. Previously with the interim city manager, I had asked multiple times and had actually met with the donor. I've read the contract and I don't see where it requires $2.2 million to get that donation. In talking with the interim city manager, what I was in, in hearing, which feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that was what city staff went and determined that they thought they'd spend to bring it up to, to full criteria for the city. I mean, again, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
So, this action will be on July 16th, that agenda, and when you see it, it will have kind of two budget builds, so you can choose the half-two version.
Okay, so?
Oh, well, I tried, it's on.
Yeah.
I'm not close enough.
So, I, I think it's very important for the residents to know that the $2.2 million isn't necessarily, in my view, needed to open that trail and make it available to everybody. I've hiked the open space up off a skyline so many times. All that land up there is not crushed granite, none of it's crushed granite. It, you go and enjoy nature and you, you walk on it, and I don't see any reason why the Linda Vista Trail. So, I, I think we're misconstruing that somehow this $2.2 million is somehow limiting or need, or required to get the Linda Vista Trail. And again, I keep asking, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
You will see different numbers July 16th.
Yeah, so?
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, for the residents, Linda Vista Trail, we should not have a problem, in my view, should not have a problem in accepting that donation and making whatever minor improvements that are needed, just to be sure that it's safe and open to everybody. So, other than that, the budget looks good to me. I think we've captured the most important one, the, the library expansion, and everything else looks good. I'd say for this year, let's pass the, the budget and move on.
But you'd support the change to fund the Historical Society?
Absolutely.
As a line item instead of a community funding?
Yes.
So, right now, what is the community funding amount, 15?
We're currently at 89,000.
No, just for Historical Society?
Just for Historical Society. They had requested 20,000 as part of their request for community funding this year.
And that's what we granted?
No, we haven't granted anything yet.
Okay, I mean, that's what?
Yes.
Okay, so, we could put that in as a line item instead of community funding?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe at a slightly larger amount?
Hmm.
25,000 instead of 20,000?
So, I think I support that this should be a continuous funding because it's important to preserve our history and we really should support that effort. But then I would also, if we are providing an annual funding, I would like the city to have more involvement in the oversight. So, is it possible, maybe we can assign a council member to sit on their board so that, as part of the funding agreement?
So, then that would mean, so, I think that would be maybe a question someone in the Historical Society could ask. We could also come up with a funding agreement?
Yes. So, I was proposing is maybe this year that's provide this one-time funding and starting from next year that we can go into a continuous funding model, provided we have an agreement on, on this transparency and oversight for that. That make sense?
Well, I, I have to say, I don't understand, we're talking about taxpayer dollars here. We're talking about a community group, making them a line item in the city of Cupertino's budget seems to me a very strange thing to do. We have lots of community groups doing lots of valuable work. We put them through a consistent process to evaluate the value they're bringing. The point of that is, we get to see on a yearly basis, value delivered. If we just say, "Hey, you're automatically in the budget," I don't get it. I, I think that if it's taxpayer funds, this is a non-government agency, this is a nonprofit, and we have many in the city. Quite frankly, right, yes, we have, we have a, a very valuable space allocation that we've given to this group, among many worthy nonprofits in the city. So, I don't, I'm not down on any kind of automatic allocation. I think every nonprofit that applies for grant money every year ought to go through a consistent process where they're, they're evaluated. I mean, groups come, groups go. We, we'd like our nonprofits to be successful, but we really have to be prudent because we're talking about taxpayer dollars here that we're, we're giving to these nonprofits. I'd like to take issue with that. And that is, I see this, the, the Historical Society of our community, I, I don't see them as being a, similar to some group that might be doing some type of cleanup or some other volunteer. The, the service that the Historical Society is providing, I, I believe is as important as any other service of the city. Residents come into the city and ask for documents, ask for any kind of thing, and I think the, right along with that, they can come in and say, "I want to know about this community. I want to know about how it is that it came into being and preserving that." To me, that's not a, a coming and going type entity. That's as important an integral to our community and should be really taken care of. And e- even if there were people that came and went that had the passion, the, the function of the Historical Society and the preservation of our community, to me, is just a fundamental that we need to treat like that and not put it in the other category, so.
Yeah, I think history is important. There is no one that's really keeping our history. In 50 years, we won't remember what people have done right today. And hoping that Historic Society would be helping us to keep a history of Cupertino. And that's invaluable. I wish it could be a part of the city department. And so, I think we should provide funding, however, I think since this is taxpayer dollars. So, I would like the city to have a say on what we are preserving, how we are preserving it, and how do we document our history. So, that's, that's why I'm wondering, maybe one or two council members can sit on their board. But that probably will take time to figure out. So, maybe that's take the next year to figure out an ongoing agreement.
How many years has the Historical Society been in existence?
53. 53 years.
53 years. I think it's pretty stable.
No.
It's just every year having to apply for this money and not being sure you'll get it or not seems, seems a little unfair to me. And it is different than some of these other nonprofits like Lions Club or Rotary or those sorts of things. So, I, I do agree we could keep it in community funding for this year and then put it as, in as a line item next year.
By the way, I think Los Altos has a historical museum, and their city found the staff position of that museum, right?
But the museum building was donated to the city, yeah. Or health of the salary?
Okay. Darcy, you have any more to say?
Um, no, I, I mean, I'll, for, for the, I, I just have some modifications to the library item, which I'll, I'll bring if, if, I'll, I'll bring in supplement to anyone's motion, and then I'll go ahead and support the?
I have something on community garden, so are you ready?
All right, let, let Darcy finish.
If you are, you are ready for a motion, I want to say something before that.
Okay, okay, well, I'll, my remarks are pretty brief, so. So, so I would support the 15,000 as a base or line item for the Historical Society. I would allocate a million to support a parking needs and traffic mitigation assessment of the Civic Center Master Plan, so that, that would be my substantive addition. I, I'd kind of like to talk about the Linda Vista Trail project, but it seems like staff is committed to going forward with a, essentially a July mid-year budget adjustment. So, I'll, I'll go ahead and respect that. I mean, what I will say is that I would have been willing to allocate $500,000 at this point with the idea that perhaps we can do some design work on it. And that would be, that should be enough money to get us to a point where we can be very cost-effective with the construction side of it. And, but, but again, I, I think staff is very, very much dedicated to bringing this back to us sooner rather than later. And in fact, as soon as possible, because we don't have a first meeting in July. And so, I'll, I'll go ahead and hold off on, on that. But, yeah, my main substantive addition was the, a parking needs and traffic mitigation assessment, as well as, you know, kind of rolling into that, any traffic mitigations or parking modifications we would need. I know that staff had asked for, was it 1.05 million? I just rounded it down to one, so that, or did you ask for 1.05?
Just to do the study?
It was 1.5. Oh, it was 1.5? Okay, so in an effort to be cost-effective about things, I, I did, I did pare that down. I, I did think it was 1.5. Where did that extra $50,000 come from, by the way? Because it was a $10.05 million budget.
1.0.
I think it's, the, the expansion was 8.55.
Okay, so you guys added like a random 50,000? Okay, all right, all right. So, so yes, that, that would be the, the main item I would add.
And if I can just add one thing, Darcy, when we're looking at the request to move that $352,792, as part of the CIP, we will need to add an additional appropriation to transfer the money out of the general fund in that amount. That effectively moves that money from the general fund?
Okay.
Which currently pays for the library extra hours into the capital budget.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you give the exact number again?
352,719.
719, okay. All right, thanks.
And, and Darcy can?
And, and Darcy can reconsider the fifteen thousand, no, make it twenty thousand for the Historical Society.
Hey, look, you know, John, for, um, it, what, what's your basis of, uh, asking for the extra five thousand, I mean, it's...
The, they had said that they had actually requested twenty-five and that we were considering fifteen. The work that they do, anything we can do to improve the, the amount of work that they're doing, and so I said, rather than jump to the twenty-five this year, let's just go ahead and make it an even twenty this year and let them request the twenty-five next year, but let's not keep them on such a tight, you know, shoelace of, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, make it an even twenty, they're doing a great job. They have their new, uh, display starting tomorrow night, they're, they're there for the community.
I believe that Historic Society didn't get any funding last year, but got twenty-five thousand the year before, is it? No?
No.
Uh, come on up, so that we can hear you.
I apologize for shouting from the back of the room. Um, this past year, we didn't receive funding because the commission is, is recommending that we become a line item. The year before, we received fifteen thousand, and the year before that, I believe, was fifteen also.
Uh, just, just so that, um, our, our staff knows, we have a member of the public saying that the, uh, screen on the right-hand side is not working in, in communal, thanks.
Someone had said, though, that they had requested twenty-five for this year, was that you, or?
That was, that was a member of my board, we actually requested twenty thousand this year.
Great.
Great.
And that was cut down to fifteen?
Um, apparently, this evening.
Okay.
And I was mistaken in the figure when I spoke with you earlier, so I apologize.
I, I was support twenty thousand.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we can get a majority support for it, then I, I would make that adjustment to twenty.
So, I had a question on your request for, for the parking, is that just the mitigation study, is a million, five hundred thousand?
No, no, it was, it was to do all the study and, and to do the physical improvements.
Okay.
To pave library field.
Pay, pay part of library field.
No, no, I don't, no, that, that's going to cause me problems tomorrow.
Okay.
No, uh, the, the idea is, is not, well, we don't, you know, we, there's opportunities on Torrey, on Pacifica, um, to increase the, the capacity in our current parking lot, so we're going to exhaust all of those areas first, before we would talk about going into library field.
Okay, great, because I also noticed, like, there's no compact spaces, they're all full-size spaces, you might gain five spaces that way, who knows?
That, that's part of it.
Yeah, okay.
I sure thought that when we talked about the library expansion, that the one point five million dollars meant you were taking, uh, that left side of the field and putting all those spots on it. I, I, I think, we, if, if my memory is right, then we're shortchanging if we're just talking about adding a few over on Torrey here and there. I mean, that entire row on library field on that far side, wasn't it, um, thirty-five or thirty-eight spaces?
No, we, we had shown that that was a potential on the, uh, on the east side of library field.
Right.
And it, and perhaps it will be, but we're just going to exhaust any other opportunities that we have before we would...
But I thought I was hearing that that was the one point five million dollars.
Yes, we, we had been looking at that first, and, um, having looked at, at the site more...
But if we're talking about adding one point five million dollars, that should be covering those thirty-eight spots.
Well, and the goal is to, is to build and mitigate in the areas I, I said, um, to, to get an equal amount of spots without getting into the library field.
Hopefully not using one point five million dollars and that's all we get for it.
Well, I mean, that's, after we do the analysis and look at our opportunities there, you know, obviously, we'd come back to council with, with our recommendations and, and with the cost.
So, so in other words, we're not spending any of this money until you do the study and we see where these spots end up being?
Exactly.
Because I, I think we need to have a robust conversation if we're starting to take up that field.
No, I agree, yes, we would do the study, have recommendations, and then we would come to council with, uh, with, with that.
So, community garden, are you ready for that?
Go.
So, one point five million dollars for community garden, sounds like a lot, and so I kept asking, where is the plan? I'd like to know what this one point five million dollars cover, and, uh, there doesn't seem to be a plan that's ever presented to the city council. And there were some option presented to the Parks and Rep Commission, but it was not clear from the minutes I read exactly which option that was chosen or what's even in that option, so I'm very fuzzy about this. And I've heard, I've, I've read some comments that say, let's keep it natural, don't do too much, uh, paving, too much artificial things, and then we have community gardeners who would help build the garden bed. So, I, I'm proposing, um, I'm, I'm hoping that eventually, yes, uh, there will be a design of the community garden that would come to the council for approval before we actually build, right?
Oh, well, yes, absolutely.
And, but then I'm host, also hoping that we will have community garden boxes, um, citywide in neighborhood parks. So, like I mentioned before, I would like, um, to entertain the idea of maybe one point two million dollars for McLaren Ranch Community Garden, so that we do a minimal design, but we, I do, I don't want to reduce the number of garden boxes, reduce any extra features, maybe, if possible. Keep the number of, um, garden boxes and use the other one point three million dollars as, uh, community grant for any neighborhood who would like to propose a neighborhood cooperation project to build community garden in their neighborhood park. So, that's what I'm proposing. So, it's still one point five million, but then it's partially McLaren Ranch and partially citywide garden project.
I, I could support that general idea. I would love it if, you know, the city could do what can only be done with heavy machinery, whatever it is, putting paths down and other things, but then, uh, maybe the fencing actually gets done by the city staff dropping off a bale of fence wire and some posts, and we let the folks that have these plots put in some sweat equity to actually put up that fence. And I also think it, it makes sense to, um, find selective spots around the city where we could have, um, uh, gardens as well, and, and if, uh, say we pilot your idea at, at the McLaren Ranch site, and we, we demonstrate what can be done with volunteers, cities provides, does the heavy machinery, whatever it is, the path crushing, the grinding, the...
A lot of boys scouts are looking for projects, Eagles got projects to do.
Exactly, and then we say to you who all want to use this thing, um, we, here's our standard for how you construct the fence, and we'll let you go at it with, um, right? Pro- it has to be done to standards, so some supervision. If that's successful, then we could take that model and perhaps implement it in, in other parks in the city.
And, uh, when I spoke to Public Works, uh, employee who manage the parks, they said that there are areas in our park that they call brown spot, areas we turn off water now to save water, but the piping are there, so there are existing sprinkler piping system there that we might not need extra, um, funding to install the pipes. So, I don't know what, how many areas are there.
So, what percentage of that community garden money is for the actual construction of the garden boxes and the fencing, and what percentage is all the infrastructure? Because garden boxes should not cost that much to construct, you know, five hundred dollars each, but it's the infrastructure that's expensive.
Yeah, we, we may not have that, uh, we, we may not have that estimate already, uh, because we did, we did go out to bid with this project and it came in overbid. I don't know if you recall, Michael, how much of the bid was going for, um, the building of the, uh, of the garden boxes and, and what else, Mayor?
Well, the, the paving, the, the plumbing, the fen- the pest control, the fencing.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the, the estimate with us, but we certainly could provide that information.
Because I think we all agree, and even the people that want to rent the plots would not mind putting in sweat equity to construct the boxes.
Yeah.
If, if, if there's no liability concern or anything.
Right, and as I was describing the project, the, the one point five million was a number for us to beat, I, you know, I, I, I agree that there's, there's certain things that the city would need to provide, you know, the accessible paths, um, I, I would, I would lend, I would tend to go to where we would provide the fencing, at least get the irrigation into each plot, but then the building of, of the boxes, the, the, um, keeping the different, um, uh, you know, ground squirrels and gophers out, I could see all those, those types of things could be done by the individual gardeners. But that's, that's where, you know, Jeff Milkus and I would talk with the community gardeners, get, and, and see what we can do. That, that was, that was the idea with the one point five.
Okay.
So, for this, I...
So, we don't need to split that into two items, maybe we just rename this as McLaren Ranch and Citywide Community Garden, is that?
I, I can, I can propose a motion that captures what you're, what you're, what you're proposing, if, if we're ready for that.
So, I have some, a couple of things as well.
Go.
Yeah, thank you. You know, we have a new city manager, um, every city manager puts her mark on the city. I think, um, w- we have proposals for staffing, uh, in this budget, some increased staffing. I think it would be respectful if the motion included, uh, the fact that, well, the city council is funding this budget tonight and funding specific positions, that these positions are subject to review and a potential change, uh, after a city manager's review. So, you might find that you have vital needs elsewhere and you'd like to reallocate those dollars to fill a different position. So, so I don't know if my council colleagues would support me, but I would really like to see us give some discretion to the city manager to, to look at the, the most vital needs of the organization. You know, presumably she'd come back to us, but, um, but...
We're talking about just for staffing.
We're not on autopilot with, with new, new staffing positions and, you know, when, when there's attrition, uh, that she'd be given the discretion to, um, yeah.
Yeah, and there was, in the analysis of full-time employees, it's true, it only went up, I think, one, but the loss of the, of the, uh, our in-house attorney was offset by the expense of the outside coun- sorry, of the outside council. So, we really are still paying for those positions, they're just not full-time city employees.
Correction, we lost three city attorney positions, not just one.
Right, right.
And they are replaced by contract, and, and then as a result, we actually have more employees, I don't know why. I, 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 there was a, a really nice page in our budget book, thank you for preparing that, I have an ear comparison of the staffing in different departments since two thousand fourteen and on, I think. It does show that our number of full-time employee increased by twenty percent since two thousand fourteen. That's something I hope the new city manager can take a look, but I don't want to, I think I'll trust you to do what you need to do, and so I don't want to question the addition of positions now.
Well, my request is only, but before those actually get implemented and, you know, personnel postings get, get put out and we, we do all of that, I just, I want to give Deb, I want to empower her to, uh, shape the staff to, to, yeah, meet our most urgent priorities, so, so that's my, my request to the rest of you. The second is, um, I've looked into the, this proposed solar PV project, it was downsized because we couldn't really get substantial, uh, grant funding for it, and the opinion of, uh, of people I've talked to who have looked at this with some scrutiny, um, say that they think that, uh, a system that has no grid, that, that, a system that can't charge when the sun goes down, um, and has solar only on an overhead shingle, which is basically what this thing is, is not a very effective thing to do. So, I would like to, uh, see, I'm, I'm happy with the grant dollars, but I would like to see a more conventional, uh, these dollars used for a more conventional, um, charging system. It's just based on, on being cost-effective. The, the input I got was that the system that's as proposed doesn't really, um, you know, the, the payoff doesn't make sense, so that's what I would like to do.
And, and just for information, uh, we did a, a quick calculation if we were just to use the conventional fast chargers with batteries.
Okay.
And just to compare the six chargers, uh, like that to the six chargers like we're proposing, and it was about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do those installations, and we felt that there'd be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that would be available to offset that, so we have about two and a quarter cost to do it, and that would, those would be on a, like a public, a public street, um, or a public facility.
And we would charge money to use those, right?
And we would charge money to do it, I mean, it would be similar to what's out here on, um, on Rod Reed's.
So, for the amount of money that you've downsized this to, after seeing that you really couldn't get much in the way of grants, how many charger spots would, do we get?
There'd be six.
Six spots?
Yes.
Okay, and you're proposing to spend how much total?
Well, it's, uh, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand, but a hundred and twenty-two are coming back in grants, so we're out forty-three.
Right.
And as I mentioned, uh, we expect a savings in, in energy use of three thousand a year, so about a twelve to fourteen year return.
All right, and so if we did conventional chargers, what are we looking at?
About a two...
Or we could get more grant money?
Yeah, it'd be about a, a two hundred and twenty-five net cost to us, and we would charge, and it's, it's my understanding that we, we charge really based on our cost, so there's really not a, a return of investment on it.
Yeah, right. So, anyway, that's where I'm at, after talking to people who administer these grants.
All right, so, with regard to that, is that already reflected in the proposed motion language? Because it looks like what we have there is a, a defunding of that by about six hundred and, well, exactly, six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, we originally come in with multiple sites, it was eight hundred some thousand dollars total.
Right.
We've reduced that to, to, uh, net the one sixty-five project.
Right.
That, that one sixty-five project is in the CIP proposal.
So, what Rod is describing is already in the CIP proposal, or is it, is he describing something else?
Yeah, well, but it's a system that, um, that you're, you're saying is not that favorable, uh, that, that's what's in the proposal now.
I'm saying the reason that agencies like the Air District, uh, don't want to fund it is because they consider it a suboptimal solution of the problem, an expensive solution to the problem.
I, I'm just trying to figure out...
And among other things, right? When the sun goes down, there ain't nothing left.
I agree with you, I agree with you, but I'm just trying to figure out, how does that affect the language of the motion as it stands right now? Because you, you've taken an eight hundred thousand dollar proposal, you've knocked it down by about six hundred and sixty thousand, and now it's about a hundred and sixty thousand, and Rod is, is suggesting something that would cost us, what, a quarter million, two hundred?
Well, I mean, uh, to, to do the, uh, the fast chargers with batteries, it would be a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, we expect a, a grant of about one hundred and fifty thousand.
Three seventy-five, okay.
Yeah, and...
So, so, so how should we reflect that? Because it's a completely different project than what's being described in our, in our current...
Well, I think you would, yeah, you would, uh, you would, you would just specify you want fast chargers with batteries... Well, I think you would, yeah, you would specify you want fast chargers with batteries, and there'd be six of them, 375,000, and staff would go after a $150,000 grant.
So you would want a 300?
With batteries?
I'm sorry.
These are solar chargers with batteries.
No, just regular chargers.
Wait, so where are the batteries coming from?
No batteries. Well, I'm not an expert with these chargers. As I understand, there's a new generation of these fast chargers that have batteries within them.
Really?
It's not solar. But I'm not the expert.
No, they're connected to the power lines.
Connected to the grid. Yeah. I'd have to get more detail. So that's what we ran the costs on this afternoon.
So from what you're hearing of what Councilmember Sinks is suggesting, he's requesting a $375,000 allocation, and you'll try to make up 125,000 of that. And so if we make a motion, it would have to be a reduction of the entirety of the solar project, but replacing that with a $375,000 allocation. Is that...
That's right. And it's a $150,000 grant that we would expect.
Okay. All right.
So even though I have a car that plugs into a charger, as does Darcy, as does Rod, I believe, I don't see why we should be doing this. Especially with the range of electric cars increasing, the need for us to subsidize public chargers, even though we charge money for them, is being diminished. You know, unless you have a car that's only getting, you know, 50 miles per charge, you're probably not even going to want to pay those rates for the public charging stations because they're quite expensive compared to what you pay per kilowatt hour for a home charger installation.
Well, I won't say that's the reason, but that was what was unique about what is being proposed. Is it's not connected to...
The grid.
The grid. And it receives the energy, it distributes it to whatever cars are plugged in, and then whatever the balance is left, it goes back to the building. It goes to the building.
Right.
And offsets our cost.
Well, why don't we take a, so who else would support chargers, so that we know what motion to bring here?
I could support conventional chargers. This, I think, is too, yeah, is not consistent with what I would consider to be a good expenditure of funds.
At the sports center, six conventional chargers? Okay.
I would support... Six conventional. But when you say fast chargers, you're talking about level three chargers?
Level two or level three?
I, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. So fast charger, fast charger is a thing that really costs a lot of money. What I was talking about were the same level two chargers we find here and here, right? And they do not cost, they're not in that price range.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't have that information.
We can debate whether we need more chargers at the sports center. I get that. But I'm questioning whether...
Now, to be eligible for that grant at the sports center for, say, a Class II charger, it would need to be on the public street. It wouldn't be inside the parking lot, because that gets closed over an evening. It would, as I understand it, it'd have to be accessible all the time.
So we are talking about adding charger only because we want the grant?
Well...
Do we already have the grant?
Well, I mean, this is here just because of the, really, the grant opportunity and...
But we haven't gotten it. We might get it.
Well, it's, I think we're reasonably assured that we would get that grant if we were to proceed with the project.
So do we, I don't have an electric car. I don't know. Do people need these chargers usually in Cupertino that's not at their home?
I think, you know, you get some idea of what's needed by looking at the existing chargers we have in front of the library and out here. So I really don't...
They are mostly empty, the chargers.
No, what I see in the parking lot is the very short-range electric cars, like the old Nissan Leaf and I think it's the Fiat.
And the Volt.
But the Volt runs on gasoline as well, so that's a little different.
Yes.
So I think Darcy, myself, and Rod would have to recuse ourselves on this.
You know, I think I would disagree.
Okay.
Well, thank you. So I'm just concerned about what I've heard about the technology proposed in this case.
Well, you know, if it pleased the council, we could, we could come back with more information, you know, answer these questions, know exactly the grant funding opportunities, come, you know, narrow it down to select locations, and we could do this at a later date.
I think, I think talking, having a discussion about whether we should have fast chargers in the city, whether the city ought to be engaged with that.
Right.
And exactly what we could expect from these grants would be, would be more constructive than doing this at, what is it, 12:30 now?
So can we just remove it from the budget for this year?
Right, you would just remove it.
I'm happy with that.
And then we'd come back with it.
Okay. Remove electric car chargers. So I have six things, six changes that I see now. A million for parking mitigation for the, for Civic Center. Increase community funding to Historical Society by $5,000. Citywide community gardens.
Just 20,000.
Right, by 5,000 to 20,000.
No, there was no before. There was none in current budget.
Oh, they're not in the community funding?
No, because they weren't the 10 proposals that were proposed to be funded from the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah, keep going.
So just say 20,000.
So 20,000. Community garden, citywide, 1.5 million with minimal effort by the city.
I think Vice Mayor Chau is saying 1.2 for McClellan and 300 for a citywide grant funding program.
Okay, 1.2 plus 300, okay. Giving the city manager discretion on adding the full-time employees in the budget and remove the electric car chargers.
Okay, I have a motion that can, or set of motions that can capture that.
Okay, sure.
All right. So, geez, I just lost it. No, Legistar or whatever it is. Okay, I, okay, so I have three motions. First one is that I move that we adopt Resolution Number 19-066, establishing an operating budget for fiscal year 19 to 20. A, approving an additional 1.75 million in appropriations to fund the community shuttle program, shuttle pilot program, that is. B, approve the community funding request of $89,000 as included in the fiscal year 1920 operating budget. C, approve, subject to review and approval by the city manager, an additional 132,695 in appropriations to fund one new full-time benefited accounting technician position. D, approve an additional 1,124,725 in appropriations to fund depreciation expense for fiscal 1920. E, approve an additional 12,533 in appropriations to fund contingency for city manager divisions. F, approve the removal of the HVAC request in the amount of $30,000. G, approve, subject to review and approval by the city manager, the hiring of a new two-year limited-term assistant engineer level position at a cost not to exceed 175,000 per year. And H, designate an annual amount of $20,000 as a base or line item for the Cupertino Historical Society. And that is the first motion.
Sorry, if I just may add, so in order to move the funding over to the library, we'd also need to increase appropriations by 352,719 transfers out from the general fund.
So you actually have, in the second item, the capital reserve? So is that, is that part of the...
So this would actually be part of the operating, because it's going to come out of the general fund and into the capital.
Okay, I have a contingency item for that. So in addition to that, then, I add, I approve an appropriation of 352,719 for the library expansion project for design of the library expansion program room project. So that is the entirety of motion number one.
Okay, I'll second that.
Can I ask one question?
Oh.
So I'm sorry, I didn't do this earlier. For the item we discussed prior, the $9 million, I heard Stephen and Liang ask you, Roger, what happens if the project is over budget? Who's paying the difference if we're over budget on these projects?
Is the Apple-funded projects?
Yes.
Yes, we would, we would be paying for those, but there's flexibility within the agreement to where we would talk with Apple and reappropriate dollars from other projects that may not be used, or it would be part of a phase two from Apple.
Okay, but it's, if we're wrong about these numbers, it's on us?
That's right.
Basically.
Sorry, one more clarification. I think in the meeting packet, attachment has, has community grant funding guideline. We have a redlined version also. So I don't see an action item to approve that. I actually would like that to come back to the council later, because I think some, some people have comments about that guideline. And that should have been a separate item for the council to approve, the community funding guideline.
We can always bring that back.
That's not, that's not in the recommended action, but it's in the attachment, so.
That's correct.
Okay, so that was your resolution?
That was my first motion.
First motion?
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Second motion is, I move that we adopt Resolution 19-067, establishing a capital improvement program budget of, I'm sorry, before I give the number, do I include the library amount in this? No. Okay. All right. Okay. Of 40,532,418 for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. And A, this is to approve 14,870, I'm sorry, strike 15,870,000 of transfers out from the capital reserve to fund the capital improvement program budget in fiscal 1920, as noted below, with 14,470,000 to capital improvement projects, capital projects fund, 1,275,000 from the Cupertino Sports Center Enterprise Fund, and 125,000 to the Recreation Programs Enterprise Fund. B, that we approve the Apple donation that has been previously approved this evening. I won't go through the individual items. C, that we approve the removal in appropriations of 65,000 for bicycle wave finding implementation. D, approve an appropriation of 5 million for the library expansion project allocated specifically for the purpose of designing and building the library expansion program room project, and delegate authority to our city manager to enter into and manage any necessary agreements to proceed with the design and architecture of the library expansion program room project. E, allocate 1 million to support, one, parking needs and traffic mitigation assessments supplemental to the prior Civic Center master plan pertaining to library expansion spaces needed, and two, traffic mitigations and parking modifications as needed. So I believe that was E, so. F, approve an additional 1,200,000 in appropriations to fund the McClellan Ranch Preserve Community Garden improvements. G, approve 300,000 for a grant funding program for proposals within the city for building additional community gardens. G, approve the reduction in appropriations for capital project support for 50,000. H, approve the reduction in appropriations for CIP preliminary planning and design for 125,000. I approve the additional 45,000 in appropriations to fund streetlight installation, annual infill. J, remove the appropriations of 827,000 for solar EV chargers at the sports center.
I thought we were going to do that.
I'm sorry?
We are not doing that.
That's what he said, remove.
Yeah, I said remove.
We're going to reduce it entirely to...
Right.
Yeah, we're basically eliminating, removing it. And K, approve the removal in appropriations of 2,200,000 for the Linda Vista Trail, subject to the council considering the item in its July 2019 meeting. And that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Can I offer, just a clarification here?
Sure.
That the, the Apple item 2B has already been approved by council with Rod, with Commissioner Sinks, sorry, Councilmember Sinks recusing himself. And so, subject to your finance director's further comments, I would say that this item has already been approved, so the council is not actually approving it again. It's just recognizing the approval.
Right, so that allows Councilmember Sinks not to have to...
To just vote on the whole budget.
Right, exactly.
That's right.
Right, with the, and I think I mentioned that in the motion as well, that it had been approved earlier.
So we're basically taking 2B out of this motion.
Well, but it's part of the appropriations from the capital reserve. And so, I mean, to the extent that we do need to make that appropriation, I mean...
Well, but, but...
The appropriation was already approved also.
It was, yeah.
So I think instead of saying approve, we could just recognize prior approval of appropriation or something like that.
Okay, then I'll supplement, I'll supplement the motion to that effect, that, what was it, subitem B has already been approved, and this is essentially placeholder to indicate the totality of the capital reserve being transferred.
So 22.3, for example, item 300, item 22, approve a budget appropriation for FY 1920, totaling 9.7.
Yes, that is already reflected in B of this motion.
Right.
Okay, so I have a second from Councilmember Willie.
Okay. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move that we adopt, I'm sorry, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 19-068. So with regard...
What is the amount now?
With regard to this appropriation limit, do we have to take into account all amounts that have been added and removed from the recommendation? Or is, can we just go with this number that's here in the recommendation?
We still go with that number, because this is reflective of revenues being collected or taxes being collected in the city. So all the decisions you made prior to don't affect this number.
Right, that's, okay, got it. Thank you. All right, so, starting over, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 19-068, establishing an appropriation limit of 104,753,580 for fiscal year 2019-20, to 2020.
I second.
Motion carries unanimously.
And Grace, I'll send you an email with the modifications to the...
That would be fabulous.
Item 18, approve renewal of existing 12-dollar premise, single-family, 144-acre commercial, 36-dollar per acre unimproved premises, and collection of storm drain fees for each premise at no increase in rates for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. So I don't think we need another staff report on this.
Yeah, I have no presentation.
Okay. We already, yeah, this was...
Okay, we already, yeah, this was, so. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No.
This is number 18.
May I make a motion?
Definitely.
I'd like to have the council adopt Resolution Number 19-069, approving the renewal and collection of existing storm drain fees at no increase in rates for fiscal year 1920.
I'll second.
Go ahead, no, no, please.
I'll second.
And I think for the public to understand, we, we are also going through a process to, to raise supplemental income, but this is just the existing program.
Correct.
That existed for years.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, item 19, fiscal year 2019 to 20, Community Development Block Grant Program Annual Action Plan. Staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I have a brief presentation for you. So tonight I have before you the fiscal year 1920 CDBG program annual action plan. So the CDBG program is from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and annually we are allocated entitlement grant funds because we are a community with $50,000 or more. And this is our 17th year as an entitlement jurisdiction. So I'll give you an overview of our required documents for the CDBG program. The consolidated plan is a five-year planning document. The 2015-2020 consolidated plan was approved in April of 2015. We have currently started the process with the county of, the RFP, in selecting a vendor to work with us to create the 2020 to 2025 consolidated plan for the county and for Cupertino. So the annual action plan is a one-year planning document that describes the activities that we intend to undertake to address the needs identified in the consolidated plan. We bring this forth every year. It's due annually to HUD in August, and we submit our action plan with the county because we also have home funds. We're part of the HUD Home Consortium through the county, so we work together as joint And the last document is the CAPR, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And this is a document that works backwards to report on the accomplishments of our prior year CDBG funds. So to give you an overview of the timeline, we had our NOFA, our Notice of Funding Availability and our Request for Proposals in the winter. We brought forth the funding allocations in April. We had a public comment period in May for this action plan. We did not receive any public comments. The action plan went to Housing Commission in May and was approved. It's here before you tonight, and then we will submit it to HUD in, before the August deadline. To go over the allocations, we have $369,264. When we came before you, we had an estimate of about $361,000 based on last year. We've actually received our entitlement amount from HUD, and we were $8,000 approximately more, so we distributed that proportionately amongst our grantees. We have $75,000 and some change for program administration, approximately $56,000 for public service grants, and $245,000 for capital housing projects. We're continuing to fund two public service programs, Live Oak Adult Daycare and West Valley Community Services Care Program. We have our new grantees for the capital housing funds, the Maitri Transitional House, rebuilding together Silicon Valley, and then West Valley Community Services Vista Village Renovation Project. So at this point, I'm available for questions, and we will, we will, just wanted to reiterate, we will submit this to HUD with the county by the deadline.
Are there any blue cards? Okay. So I don't have any questions. John, Darcy?
No, no questions.
Liang? Rod?
I'm good and happy to make a motion.
Great, go.
I move that the council conducts the public hearing now and adopts Resolution Number 19-070, approving the FY 2019-20 CDBG annual action plan per the staff report.
Motion carries unanimously.